Good evening, everyone. We call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation. Deacon Dick Smith is here with us tonight from Church of the Ascension.
Thank you. Want me to turn that way?
No, facing this way.
Oh, okay.
Yes, just come up to the microphone.
Oh, that way, okay. Thank you. Almighty God, you have told us that when two or three or more are gathered in your name, that you would be among us. Lord, we thank you for being here tonight, and we come with an attitude of gratitude. We are so grateful for the many gifts and blessings that come to this town. We're grateful for the citizenship. We're grateful for those people who take leadership. Lord, we ask you to stretch out your hands and bless Linda and the council members and all the people here tonight. Help them make decisions for the good of all of our community and that we all work in harmony. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Dick. Roll call, please, Beth. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
regarding the proposed property tax. Okay, we've already had one meeting. The next one is going to be Thursday, March 8th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center in Ballroom 1. So if you couldn't make the first one, we have one more coming up, which is in the morning. So please come to that one, and we've got a great presentation for you with lots of information. Right now, we'll go on to our presentations. I am going to do the third one first. This is recognition of Commissioners Sherman, Abrahamson, and Lynn Mott for their service on the Community Services Advisory Commission. First, I would like to, Lynn Mott couldn't be here with us today because of a family emergency, but I would just like to say something about her service first. She began serving on the Community Services Advisory Commission in August 2014. Lynn contributed her time and considerable talents to the commission. During Lynn's time on the Advisory Commission, she served on the Parks Facilities Work Group. Lynn contributed innovative thoughts to whatever issues the commissioners were addressing. We thank Lynn for her concern for the wants and needs of Fountain Hills community. We thank her for her service, her volunteer work, and we wish her well. And next, Sherm Abrahamson. He began serving on the Community Services Advisory Commission in August of 2014. Sherm contributed his time and considerable talents to the commission. During his time on that commission, he served as chair and vice-chair, as well as serving on the program's work group. He contributed innovative thoughts to whatever issues they were addressing. Right now, we want to thank Sherman for his concerns, for his wants and needs, for all the good that he's done for our town, for his service, and he's with us today. So I'd like to ask Sherm to come up, and I have a certificate of recognition to present to you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, I just want to thank Sherm because he's given unselfishly to this town, not only on this commission, but in other ways as well. He's been very active in the community, and so I want to express my thanks.
All right. Sherm just said it's 2012 he started. Oh, okay. He started before they combined it from the two commissions together. So that's why the extra two years. Okay, so we have this present to you to say thank you for your service. And I'll come take a picture. All right, first up on economic development, I'm going to go to Councilman Yates and Councilman DePorter. Whoever wants to start?
I'll jump in.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have Mayor Cooper Association of Government, our Regional Domestic Violence Council. The committee met. Our ongoing theme is trying to get awareness out there and get all the intergovernment agencies working together. If you can imagine, some of the issues that we have, a lot of the perpetrators, they just move to different municipalities, and then the whole process starts back over again. But we've been working with the court system at the state level, and we formed a new committee. It's part of the Arizona Judicial Council, and it's called the Committee on Impact of Domestic Violence. It's exciting, and I know that might sound anticlimactic, but in order to get something at this level, we can really start working on some projects and getting all the municipalities in the state working together on domestic violence awareness. The Honorable Wendy Million is the, she's at Tucson City Court. She's the chairman, and we've got several projects that we're going to be working on. Moving forward, GPEC, I'm sure economic development is on everybody's mind. I'm big on social media. I like to put out all the neat jobs and companies that are coming to Arizona. We have a theme at GPEC. It's called the Connected Place. Everything is technology-driven because that's what's kind of driving our economy, at least in Arizona. Driverless vehicles, wearables, Industry 4.0, and that's just kind of everything being connected, cybersecurity. But now this has kind of gone a new direction. It's almost perpetuated itself, a new industry. It's called blockchain, and it is tamper-proof ledger or transaction. It's for shipping and finance. I can go on and on about all the companies that have been coming to Arizona. Right now, this week, we're Inspiring Entrepreneurs. It's Startup Week in Phoenix, and we invited five companies from Mexico that are working with entrepreneurs on some of this startup industry. Phoenix is ripe. We're in like the top five in a lot of the new business categories. You might have read Nicola Motors. That's 2,000 jobs, that alone. It's electric semi-trucks. They're coming. It's over a million square feet on 500 acres. It's coming, and we have a meeting this Thursday, so I'll have some more metrics to share with you this Thursday. It's exciting stuff for Arizona. You might have read Fountain Hills just got asked to be part of the Valley Metro Board of Directors. This is a big deal, even though we don't have regular bus stops. But again, with technology, it does open some doors for us. We've been working on this for the last four years. I want to say lobbying, but working with Valley Metro on try to get some more stops, or at least us connected to the line. Four years ago, five years ago, we did a study, and Valley Metro was pretty good at checking all the residents to see how many people would use the bus system. One thing they left out was checking with all the businesses. So we've been working with them over the last year or so, and they've agreed to update the study for free to include all the businesses and try to see how many of the hourly-type people would use the service. A big thing, the first time in the light rail, we have our first new station. It's on 50th and Washington Streets, and connectivity is really big. It promotes economic development everywhere goes. Paratransit, and this is why it's a good lead into Nick, paratransit's the idea of you have the main system, but then there's alternative systems that connect into the main system. And it could be anywhere from buses, vans, and with technology, Uber and Lyft. And with that, I'll turn that over to Nick because it's a good segue.
Thank you. We had a great meeting with Lyft, one of the large rideshare companies here just last week. They had an innovative program with the city of Phoenix called the Last Mile Program. Basically, the city of Phoenix was finding, they have a plethora of bus routes running through their infrastructure, but they had a lack of ridership in South Phoenix and some other important areas of their city where they were finding that people were having a difficult time connecting to work ultimately, and childcare, and the things we need to live. So they started this Last Mile Program where their citizens get a certain amount of discounts every month on Lyft for people to connect to that last mile. Maybe your bus stop is not close enough to where you need to go, and you can just get that last mile. So we're exploring some opportunities with them. I think we have some opportunities with our, that large parking lot that is a bus system, and it's also a place where they could take a connector bus straight downtown on Country Club and McDowell.
Gilbert.
Gilbert, I'm sorry. And then also over, just right over the hill on Shea on Scottsdale Road, would be able to connect into their bus system where there's more ample opportunities. So Lyft is very open to new opportunities, so we're excited to bring them to town and see what we could do to offer more amenities for our community.
Okay, that's great. And you know, it's a really big deal to finally get a seat on that Valley Metro Board because we've been trying to work with them for years, but then once they have their board meeting, you know, Fountain Hills isn't there, so if you're not there, they kind of don't see you anymore. So having somebody actually sitting there is great, and I thank Councilman Yates for taking that on. I also had MAG meeting, that's the Economic Development Committee. Basically, we just talked about some new data services that will be available to our Scott Cooper, and we also discussed further the sun corridor to help exports from Arizona into Mexico and into Canada. We had our mayor's GPEC meeting, which is separate from the GPEC Board of Directors that Councilman Yates sits on, and I'm not going to repeat some of the things that he said because we also discussed those things at our meeting, but while we were there, it was just before the open, and they had 10 executives there that were thinking about relocating their companies here to Arizona. And the great thing about it was, it was, well, most of these executives came from, they came from states where the snow was piled high. So they took advantage of that, and they gave them lunch out on the patio, and you should have seen them just out there, just enjoying it and looking at the view because that's on, what, GPEC's like the 25th floor, right? And they're looking at the view of all of the valley. So, you know, just this beautiful weather is just encouraging enough for them to relocate here, and they did get some good prospects from that. So we're looking forward to whatever we can do, everybody working together.
Madam Mayor, if I could add, the neatest thing about what's happening in Arizona is all these industries that I've named, other than huge manufacturing, but even light manufacturing, these are all industries that Fountain Hills can take advantage of. The fact that we have access on the B-line, the fact that we're talking to some of the bus routes, the technology on connectivity, all these technological-driven companies could come to Fountain Hills, and it's really opened some doors for us, so it's exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great clean industry for us to have. And so that's a great segue into our Economic Development Director's report. Scott Cooper is here to bring us up to date on his projects. Grady, did you want to start with that?
I believe Mr. Cooper, I'll let him share the excitement with the group here and the council, so please join us, Mr. Cooper. I suppose I can claim what Mr. Abrahamson said about being too shy to talk, huh? Mayor, council, thank you. It's good to be back to give the update, and I appreciate the time given. I know this is a big meeting, and I'll try and be quick and, but get to all the details as well. I usually like to start this off with kind of a statewide approach and bring it down to regional, and then bring it down to Fountain Hills. The statewide industry report for the Arizona Commerce Authority, all those numbers that you see, the jobs created and salaries and capital invested are all increases over last year and in the last two or three years. So the uptick continues slightly uncontrollably, which is nice to see. The jobs are up about over 2,000 over last year, so that's a great number. Regionally, you've heard it mentioned before, Councilmember and the mayor both mentioned it with Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Again, much the same with the jobs, company locates and added payroll, as well as qualified prospects, all increases over the previous couple of years. Nice, slow, steady increases, and very encouraging for business as well. The leads we get, and they're typically, when they come from the state and they come from GPEC, that's one of our generators, one of our economic development partners. The total direct partner-generated leads, and these are these leads that they come into my office, they come to my computer, it's what I see for companies and what they're looking for. We're 79 over the last year. GPEC had 55, and the Commerce Authority had 24. Out of those, qualified leads and responses, those are responses that we were able to make as a town, that we had the right fit for what was being presented, meaning we had the right property, the right site, the right building, that met their needs. We had eight, and there are four of those that remain active to this day. Four of them, actually, I think three of them relocated outside of Arizona and one relocated in Tempe, I believe. Now, that's a slight increase, too. Over last year, we had three leads, so up from eight, again, a nice uptick and good We have eight active leads, and these are generated in-house through various means, networking, relationships, direct contact, walk-ins, the Chamber of Commerce, staff referrals. We'll take them from anywhere, we can get them and look into them and see if they're viable. But we do have eight currently that remain active, and we continue to work with. Probably the meat of it, this is what a lot of people care about and want to see, recent projects and things that we've had in the last year and a little bit year-plus. The first, Bone House Brewery. I think there's probably a few people here that are tired of me talking about this project. It's been an ongoing one. It's done, being done by local entrepreneurs who are doing a lot of this on their own, building it from scratch, literally brewing it from scratch. But I talked to the owner today, and they are brewing, he was brewing today. They are selling wholesale, and the retail side of that should open up very, 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 so, it's so close I can taste it.
I'm going to go knock on his door if he doesn't open it soon.
They are. They are working through a few things, but they're minor and close, and he had hoped within the month, so.
And Scott, I'm sorry, Mayor, they do have their certificate of occupancy, so there's nothing else that they need to do other than they're just tasting.
Nope, they've got their liquor license.
Make the beer.
They are literally brewing right now, so it's exciting, and I know that this has been probably the number-one question that I've received over the last year-plus, and I certainly understand that. It's nice to bring something like this to the community, and we certainly wish them the best, and we'll continue to work with them through their opening and as they are an existing business in town. So we look forward to it, too. Vitargo is, this is a corporate headquarters relocation out of Southern California, bringing over about five new jobs. They're all corporate jobs, all C-level executives. And this was, interestingly enough, was the very first company I ever had contact with here four years ago, when I first started, the first month I started here. And they had put their operations in Southern California, keeping in contact just periodically, seeing how things were going. Sometimes those things pay off, and you don't know why or how, but to have them back in this community and located here is great. I know it's small, but that's fine. That fits our model pretty well, and the potential for growth with them remains, and there could be some announcements coming yet this year and this spring on some possible growth with that company. And what they do, they are a supplement company. They focus on carbohydrate replenishment. It's a powder that goes in the drinks for supplemental nutrition. FTS USA is Fine Time Solutions USA. This is one of the more exciting projects, certainly based on volume and number of jobs, but by what they hope to accomplish and what their plan is to accomplish is to be the first, first in a very, very long time, but the first and only right now in the U.S. 100% U.S. watch-made company. That means from top to bottom, inside and out, they will be initially bringing in the movements, which are the inner workings of a watch, from outside, but they will be in near time, within three to four years, producing and making that movement in-house here in Fountain Hills as the only 100% USA-made product. It's a big deal, certainly with any product, and it's a big deal with watches definitely since we haven't had one in here, I think, since the '50s in the U.S. So I'm really excited about that. Not to mention their advanced manufacturing jobs, they're skilled, they pay well, and they're going to be starting in April is their target date with about 30 employees. And their potential is, and their plan is to have 100 by year three. That's, I can't emphasize enough how incredible that is and the size-wise it is, just because that's a volume which we haven't seen in, I don't know, in Fountain Hills. I've never seen it, and we're certainly going to be working with them to help them grow and find the people that they need to find and work with them throughout the process, and certainly as an existing business moving forward. The next project is a hotel project, one that if they keep jumping through their hurdles that they need to on their end moving forward, we hope to have that into planning. They've met with staff already in planning, and if they continue to move forward, that will be coming to planning and then certainly to council here shortly for approval on some zoning. And then certainly, a project we all know about, and I certainly won't include in this because it is an economic development project largely, Park Place. There were questions as recently today on social media, asking about it, and it remains on everybody's minds because they drive through and they see it, and it's starting to open. About over half of the available commercial space is in lease negotiation or under letter of intent. They're at 32,000 square feet of commercials, so that's over 16,000 square feet in that process right now. It's a good mix of retail, restaurant, and office. Unfortunately, because they're in the lease negotiations and it's private, I'm not at liberty to say, but nonetheless, it's exciting to see that kind of traffic and that kind of volume for that project, and we will certainly, as the retail plan comes forward, and myself will be working hard to fill that project 100%.
And Scott, as I understand it, some people have already moved in to the apartments.
I'm not sure on the residential side of that, is that?
I think six have already moved in.
Madam Mayor, along those same lines, of this, I heard it was closer to 60, 65% in different stages, but I understand they're not just transfers. These are new companies, some regional, some expansions from outside, so there's not a lot of, or I should say, there's more outside of Fountain Hills coming to Fountain Hills.
There certainly is that component of mixed, yeah. It's not only in and out, but mixed uses as well, so it's a strong project, certainly commercially-wise for us, and a viable one at that.
Do you have any timeline for that?
No.
I know.
I got in trouble with the timeline with the brewery. I have to be careful. And a last Copperwind. In recent meetings with staff, the owner has assured us that everything's ready, and they are eager to move forward, so we certainly look forward to that as well. Another exciting project is Jump is a, working with both the public, both Jumpstart Biz and Evid on a public-private partnership to create a business startup accelerator for an entrepreneurial program. Having Evid in town has really opened up a lot of possibilities for us, and when we have the professionals like Jumpstart Biz who have the history and the background and their abilities in business, and partnering with a group like Evid who's been very forward-thinking and very open to working together on an entrepreneurial program, both for existing students, traditional high school age, non-traditional, meaning adults, and building an entrepreneurial program with business, with new business, with startups, with existing businesses looking to grow or get over their next step, has been tremendous to work with, and Evid has been phenomenal. They've been open to new ideas and pretty much everything that we've brought forward. So what we'll be working on is workforce training, developing a curriculum, attracting more students, which is certainly important to our schools and our town, being a large and full business resource, and really ultimately creating a healthier business climate for all businesses. I mentioned this a little bit earlier, the retail recruitment plan. The full presentation on this will be coming at a work-study session on March 6th. We certainly invite everybody who would like to attend to please attend, and I think it'll be pretty interesting to see the information presented. We'll present findings from our combined efforts over the last six months of research and data gathering. We'll cover data and analytics, strengths and weaknesses, and where our opportunities lie, top categories for recruitment, and implementing the plan, probably the most important part of that plan. Marketing. This is a fun one always, and we spend a lot of time and effort and largely focused on digital because it's a lot of bang for our buck. I could do one ad in an area development magazine for my entire budget for marketing, or I could do digital marketing and run it for five, or four, or five, six months for the same money and reach a lot more people, and that's what we've chosen to do. This year, we are targeting 200,000 businesses and business owners in Chicago and 143,000 in California. We're targeting our tech, healthcare, financial, insurance, and professional services sectors. Those are the ones that have been identified in our plan, and those are the ones we're reaching out to. During the 2017 campaign last year, our click-through rate, which is clicking on the banner, the ad, or the video, was three times the national average using this campaign, and we had about 634 people click on the ad, and that drove them to our website. So worst-case scenario, that's 634 people who didn't know about Fountain Hills were able to learn a little bit more about it. It'll really be interesting to see a second-year program, seeing that come through again, and seeing Fountain Hills in front of these same people and the new people, what the impact is, and we'll really be able to measure from that. So our totals, about 165 new jobs, that does not include the projected 100 by the end of year three for Fine Time Solutions, and well over $200 million in capital investment. It's been a good year, and certainly a lot to build on, a lot to grow, and I like to see the signs that we've seen through state, through the region, and in Fountain Hills as things continue to climb steadily. So I really look forward to the coming year and new challenges and new opportunities, and thank you for your time.
Scott, I know, I speak for the rest of the council, I say thank you for the great job that you've been doing. I know you're a one-man show, but you've been really coming through for us, like you had lots of people working with you. Thank you for all your hard work and your dedication to the town.
I appreciate that, and certainly, you know, it's a team effort. It's all the staff helps me, council, and certainly you, Mayor, Grady, our town manager, and everybody. When you're small like this, you have to come together like that, and it's important to have all of you as ambassadors to the community, and people like this here that care and are here are equally as important to this town.
Yeah, well, I owe you a Bone House Brew. Yeah, well, I owe you a bone-hoss brew. When they finally open.
I'm gonna hold you too.
Scott, congratulations, this is a great report. Do we have any ability to bring the Realtors together with new employees in some way to try to entice them to live in town after they become employees?
That's a great idea, and that's something we could certainly look into. I think that's something that's been done in the past, something I've worked with on in the past, and I think that's a great idea, and we'll certainly look into that, and we'll have to, as part of the recruitment plan, certainly for 100 employees, we'll be actively involved with workforce development and the workforce agencies across the state to bring people and employees to Fountain Hills, and that'll be an opportune time to kind of bring them together as well to look at that. That's a tremendous opportunity, you're right. Thank you.
Another thought, not to give you more work, but I think, try to make it as simple as possible, to think about sending out a survey, a very simple, one-page survey, to all the new businesses like six months after they open, to ask them how many of their employees actually have moved into town, or something like that. I think it would be good to just keep track of it, and to do what we can to entice new employees to reside here.
I agree, and that's something we can do as well. I know that the, and Mayor Kavanaugh had mentioned about the MAG data, and some of that, those reports are in, included in the MAG data, so it'd be worth looking into that too.
Anything, Scott? Councilman Shay?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, four years?
You hardly believe it.
Boy, time flies. I do, I do recall, four years ago, you were tasked with our economic development plan, and you reminded us, and I want to remind you, that when you started down the road, I mean, it was very difficult. I mean, building that culture in Fountain Hills and bringing new businesses to town is quite a challenge, and you reminded me, what really helped me be patient with the whole process is, we were looking at a marathon, not a sprint. And from my perspective, if anyone follows the Boston Marathon, I think you've, you're over Heartbreak Hill, and it's all smooth sailing from here, so I just want to congratulate you and the staff on, on a job well done, and I won't ask you what milepost you think you're at in the marathon. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Yates?
Again, kudos, Scott. I've had the honor of working with you since you've been here, and we drink the same tea. But having said that, what I'm really excited, even though you're a one-man show, you're known now nationwide because of the way you've been able to leverage your resources. This council, you know, wanted to give you some more, maybe get you some help, and instead you drove us to leverage those resources. Could you give us a little background of retail strategies, who they are and their area of expertise, and what an incredible value? I mean, we're all going to hear the report, but just that resource that you have?
Yes, Councilmember Yates, Mayor Kavanaugh. Retail Strategies is a group of commercial real estate professionals, marketers, and that have worked together and have made contacts throughout a lot of time in the industry, and they have developed a reservoir of over 10,000 contacts in the retail and commercial world. And those are direct contacts, those are current contacts, these are people they work with on an annual, regular, monthly, daily basis, in and out of meetings, conferences that happen on a regular basis throughout the country. They are in Texas, and we contracted with them as kind of an extension of staff, essentially, to help and assist with the commercial and retail efforts in Fountain Hills. They are a group of seasoned professionals that I respect a lot, and I've known a couple of them for a little while, and they, they care about the community, they've spent time in this community, and I think that what they're going to bring forward is going to be very interesting, and I think in time, if we're patient and we stick with this, I think the payoffs will be tremendous and definitely worth our time and effort.
Okay, anything else?
When are they scheduled to present?
March 6th.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Tollis?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, you're doing a great job, and thank you for all your positive thoughts and information on, on what is happening in Fountain Hills. I wanted you to comment a little bit on the major opportunities and the parcels of land that have the highest and most impact on our tax base, and that would be the parcel on Shea and Palisades, that was the former Hilton Plan, and also the parcel behind the Bashes. And last year, there was some development there that unfortunately fell through, 24-hour care medical facility for the community, which I think would be something that this community needs. Where are you on that, and is there any information you can share that, that might, might entice us to something good happening in the near term?
Councilmember Tollis, Mayor Kavanaugh, let me start with the Shea and Palisades parcel, and I appreciate that because I ran over it in my marketing section and things that we're working on with that. And one of those is, is what is the highest and best use of that site? It has been zoned resort property. We have, over the course of, I'm just going to ballpark this since it was before me, over 10 years, had several interested parties in that on a resort side. Even since I've been here, I think we've had three meetings with various interested parties to do a resort-style on there. In the most recent past, what we've been seeing is a lot of housing interest in that parcel, and not 100% housing, but a mixed-use development-type housing where it's got a commercial component to additional housing on that, and now that would be certainly something that would come forward and come to you, our council, for decisions and to look into that further. I think that, I see it as a commercial piece. It's, as you know, it's a gorgeous property, a resort makes sense, and it's something that will continue to strive and look at. I think a corporate location makes a lot of sense, and that's part of the marketing thing I was going to mention with our partnership with GPEC. That site is on their Corporate 100 list, meaning it's their top Fortune 100, Corporate 100 companies that they're working with and looking at. That is one of their sites that's on their list to showcase when they have corporate relocations or regional locations to build a corporate relocation office site. So, it makes sense for that because of its scenic beauty and its site location. Again, those are decisions that would have to be made above my pay grade, but that's the activity we've seen on that site. The, the Heartbreaker site, the second one you mentioned, was behind Bashes, and I say Heartbreaker because of the component that we had on that as a care facility that would have been, that is needed for this town, and it's something that we're still working on and, and hope to bring to. That project fell through because of market issues, because of other projects that took, took hold first with, including a major hospital being built in the North Valley, that, that put this on the sideburner and not quite sure for how long, indefinitely, certainly. That doesn't stop us from looking at other options, other carriers, and other opportunities for that site, and we certainly will continue to do that. I think the owners have shown the ability and the willingness to work on the commercial sites on that, and that would be along Palisades, certainly, and that larger piece. So, we'll continue to work on that, and you're right, that is, I consider it one of the top needs in this town, to have something, a 24-hour care facility in our communities of 24, 25,000 people is definitely a need. Thank you.
Anything else for Scott? All right, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
The next two are just wonderful presentations. This is, this is the fun part of our job up here, is to do these awesome things. So, I'm going to invite up to the podium Republic Services General Manager, Tricia Pontsdillion, and she's going to talk to us about the 2017 My Republic Rewards Community Grant Award. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Tricia Pontsdillion, General Manager for Republic Services, and here with me is Tara Jeanette, our Operations Manager. So each year, Republic Services awards a $10,000 grant to deserving Fountain Hills nonprofit organizations. Through Republic Rewards, Fountain Hills residents vote on a charity by choosing, by using recycled points they have accumulated throughout the year, by registering each time they use Republic's Recycle Curbside Service. The three organizations that were selected to compete for points this year were the River of Time Museum, Thunderbird Artists, and Fearless Kitty Rescue. I want to thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, the residents, and the nonprofit organizations for participating in this important and rewarding program. So I am pleased to announce the winner of the most recent community grant for Fountain Hills is Fearless Kitty Rescue.
Yay! I know we have some representatives here from Fearless Kitty, come on up.
A $10,000 check.
Wow.
Don't give it to her yet, come up front.
Sure, come on up, that's why I brought this down, this beautiful. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh and councilmembers. On behalf of Kim, my business partner, and myself, and everyone with Fearless Kitty Rescue, I don't know if, can you hear me okay, is we thank you. We thank, obviously, Republic Services for giving this, giving this opportunity to us. This is the second time we've won this, and it's critical to us, of our operation and of saving animals. We thank the townpeople who have supported us again and voted for us, so thank you so much for, for doing so. $10,000 obviously sounds like a lot to anyone, and it is a lot to us. We've already taken, well, let me back up, we have been a rescue for five and a half years in the town of Fountain Hills. We've taken in over 1,000, thank you, we've taken in over 1,000 kitties to date, and we've already taken two in under the grant. So, one kitty has already been adopted, and the other one, Bonnie, she's very grateful for this check, I can tell you that. And that kitty came in, and the commitment that we have to these animals is, to Fountain Hills animals, is call us, and, you know, a stray animal, I had that animal within 45 minutes of her being stray here in Fountain Hills, just emaciated, sick, and needed us. So, thank you so much, everyone, for supporting us as we support our humans and our kitties. So, thank you so much.
All right. Okay, can anyone come on this side? Come on over here. All right. Okay. Thank you. I really thank you so much. Thank you. Yay!
Good luck, Cassie.
I know, right? They're the most amazing volunteers. I mean, they're just so dedicated, and if you haven't, if you haven't visited Kittyville, it's right on Avenue of the Fountains, and just, it's just amazing, you can just walk around, and you've got all the windows, and you can watch all the little kitties in there playing, and try to resist taking one home. I know the last time I brought my grandson there, he went home with two kitties, so it's really, really hard, but what they do is absolutely amazing, the job they do with the grants and all other kind of, the money that they bring in, the donations, but it's the volunteers, they're just incredible volunteers, they're just so dedicated, so they've got, they'll be open during the fair, right? So, you can just stop in if you want to see the amazing work that they've done there and see how it's just terrific inside, and buy something from their, their store to help support the kitties. So, thank you again. Republic Services, can't thank you enough for this grant. This is truly amazing, what you've done for our town. I know we're the first town to ever receive this grant, and I know the people are always very anxious to vote and pick who, and everybody can't win, but it shows the enthusiasm and the dedication of Fearless Kitty that they have won this twice, so, so thank you, Tricia, and thank you to all of Republic Services for giving this to our town. Thank you so much. Anybody in the council want to?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to mention two things. One, my wife is a volunteer, and I keep saying, no more, no more.
He wants another kitty.
Also, you didn't mention, but as a, as an offshoot, what you guys do, you have pretty much cured the stray cat issue that we had in Fountain Hills.
The feral cats.
The feral cat.
Yes.
That's all the strays.
That's huge, yeah.
And that was the catch-and-release program that was funded by the last Republic Services grant that you won. Yeah.
And, you know, cats are out on the streets for whatever reason, and you know, with our train, they don't last very long, so it's difficult that we get them in as soon as possible, and so it's, you know, the townpeople are the ones helping, obviously, so when they steal a mole, and then we just pick them in and they get them out.
All right, truly amazing. Thank you, thank you, Tricia, thank you to all Republic Services. Thank you. All right, now we go on to another awesome presentation. This is the recognition of the Town of Fountain Hills designation as a dark sky community by the International Dark Sky Association. And I'm going to go to Grady first, Grady has?
Thank you, Mayor. As most of the public knows, and the council, and Mayor know, we went through a very arduous process of applying for membership and to be designated as a dark sky community. We did that last fall, and actually was kind of towards the end of the summer, and we had an official notification around the first week in January that we had become a designated dark sky community. And we just received today the official letter, which I will read to all of us, from the International Dark Sky Association. Starts off, "Dear Mayor Kavanaugh, on behalf of the International Dark Sky Association's Board of Directors and over 3,000 members worldwide, it is my pleasure to extend my sincerest congratulations on the Town of Fountain Hills designation as the world's 17th international dark sky community. The town may now count itself among an exclusive group of less than two dozen municipalities worldwide, from Canada to Denmark, that have met the most rigorous international standards for the protection of the night sky through the implementation of quality outdoor lighting practices. This accomplishment is made all the more significant by the town's position at the edge of one of the United States' largest metro areas, itself the major source of artificial light pollution, the night skies of Arizona. Fountain Hills has shown that the adoption of dark sky-friendly outdoor lighting policies and design practices is cost-effective, good for business, reflective of community values, and supportive of resident quality of life. The town has established itself as an issue leader toward which not only Phoenix and its suburbs, but indeed all Western US cities can look as a model of best practices. In this regard, the town truly embraces the notion of all that is Arizona." There's a lot more left to the letter, which I will not continue reading, but it does close with, "We look forward to working with your staff, residents, and community leaders to nurture and deepen our relationship in coming years. Please consider us at your service as we continue to strive towards our common goals. With sincerest best wishes, J. Scott Fariband, Executive Director of the International Dark Skies Association."
All right, so we have some representatives here, and I think you have something to give us, so come on up, Nancy, Joe, okay, and I'm going to come down again.
Good evening, my name is Joe Bill, 30-year resident of Fountain Hills.
Nancy Bill, 30-year resident of Fountain Hills.
All right. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, Grady and town staff. I've been to enough council meetings to know that you are often the ones who recognize two and a half years, where do you think we would be without your support? Where do you think we would be without the support and guidance of the town staff? Where would be, we be without our outstanding board members, many of whom are here tonight? And finally, where would we all be if we didn't share a vision for the future of Fountain Hills that can be very important to what we might be able to develop? You know the answer to those questions. We'd be nowhere. We're here because it has truly been a team effort, and we are so thankful that you have been on the team, a team that has created tremendous publicity for this town and newspapers across the country. We are so proud to be a part of this community. Thank you for all your efforts related to this project and the many others that you work on every week to make this town the wonderful town that it is.
And in keeping with the theme of recognizing this council and this town staff, I'd like to share with you some handwritten, um, comments, and, uh, that came with a box, from John Barrentine, Director of Conservation for the International Dark Sky Association. Quote, "On behalf of the International Dark Sky Association Board of Directors and our thousands of members worldwide, please accept this plaque for the Town of Fountain Hills on the occasion of its designation as an international dark sky community. We look forward to a long and productive relationship with Fountain Hills as we work together to advance the goals of dark skies and quality outdoor lighting. With kindest regards, John Barrentine."
Exciting things are continuing to happen with our efforts, which we won't go into tonight, but, uh, we can't wait to talk to you about it. But in any case, tonight, we just want Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, to accept this plaque in recognition of the town's efforts to becoming only the 17th international dark sky community in the world. [applause] If we're going to take a picture, we'd like to have, uh, our board members who are here join us, please.
You know, I know they said that this is a team effort, and of course it is, because look at this team. These are all volunteers in other, in other facets of our, uh, town also. But of course, the driving force of all this has been Nancy and Joe, and this would not have happened without them. I mean, you always need leaders to lead. You have been amazing. Absolutely amazing. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to you.
Where are the council members? They should be here too.
Right. Council, want to go behind us?
Sure. Absolutely. You guys are all part of this.
All right. And, uh...
Dennis.
Don't be shy.
Dennis, come here.
Dennis, come on, Dennis, don't hide. Henry.
We have a special case where we put our awards, which is, uh, on the first floor here, and this will get a very prominent spot, uh, in that case.
Mayor. Mayor. Behind you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, could Joe have one more say at the, he's got some exciting news just on the publicity.
Well, I was talking to Cecil ahead of time. We were excited because I think some of you know that we've already had a $1,200 telescope just donated to us just because of the publicity in the Arizona Republic. We're going to be raffling that off at the festival. Um, yesterday, we got word that, um, about almost a $9,000 telescope is being donated, and we're picking it up tomorrow, so...
Wow.
Great. Well...
And I know you have some other secret, you have some other secret plans in the works. Did you have a question, or you want to comment?
I do have a question. It's something he doesn't want to talk about.
Well, he said it's a secret.
Well, give us a tidbit.
He's going to drag it out of you.
There's, there's something going on in April, I think.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Alan. Uh, actually, um, we are really excited about this, um, festival coming, the Dark Skies Festival on April 21st. We haven't even started our marketing, and three, um, news media outlets already indicated that they're going to be there, uh, the Arizona Republic, uh, ABC-15, Cronkite News, and, and again, we haven't even started. We also, of course, I just was talking to Jay Schlum today, who is on our board. He's in charge of food and craft beers, and, um, he had indicated that Bone House Brewing is going to be one of the brewers, along with the, uh, Dark Sky Brewing Company from Flagstaff.
All right.
And so, um, that's underway. But we have so many things going on. We have a student art contest from kindergarten through 12th grade in our school district is involved. We have a photo contest, we have the Mobile Planetarium, uh, we have the library involved, the museum is involved, the community garden is involved. So this, this plaza is going to be hopping on April 21st, so, thank you.
And I know you're looking for sponsorship.
Yes, we are.
Don't be bashful.
Yes. Don't be bashful about saying that, because this is going to be awesome for anybody who, who is willing to sponsor.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Great. That's just, anybody else have anything to say before we go on?
Wow.
No? Besides wow, you want to give them another round of applause?
Yeah.
Go right ahead. Yes. Thank you. Wow. All right, we're going to go on to our call to the public, and just a reminder, for anybody who it's your first time up here, you have three minutes. Watch the little lights. When it turns red, your time is up. And, uh, please just state your name and the town you live in. Just say Fountain Hills. Don't give your actual address. Is he going now?
I don't know.
Or, oh, no, I don't. Let's do the call to the public, and then we'll do... Okay, let's do that first.
Mayor, we have five cards. Barbara Treblehorn, followed by Melody Kennedy.
She gave me an update, but she didn't put him on. She gave me an update, but she didn't write him on. So I forgot. Thanks for the...
Thank you for listening to me, and I've been encouraged this evening that these remarks might not be necessary, but I will go ahead and say them anyway.
Get really close to that microphone, so everybody can hear you.
Okay. I live on Palomino Boulevard, and I'm extremely concerned about the water tank exposed by Epcor Project. This hulking white mass looms over our once beautiful Wash, like an... Where's my place? Sorry. An iridescent spacecraft. You will see a picture in your folder that I have included from two mornings ago where it really shocked me. I said, "They've got to see this." This little desert canyon filled with pristine desert plants and lichen-covered rock formations has been recently, has been until recently, an idyllic setting for panoramic mountain view and the botanical gardens. My husband and I are living in a house built for Arthur Hewitt, who was one of the founders and owner of The Times newspaper. As an enticement to move to Fountain Hills, the president of McCullough Properties offered him any har, any lot that he desired. I sincerely doubt he would choose his selected location as it is today, nor sadly would my husband and I have purchased said property years later. Planting mature camouflage and painting the tank a desert blending color are imperative deterrents to this blight on the landscape. To my thinking, eucalyptus would probably be the best replacement. That's what was there before, and it thrived for a long time, particularly under the tutelage of Chaparral water. And about four years ago, we started seeing these trees slowly lose their foliage and come, become very unhealthy. And I guess the moral of that story is if you don't water trees, they're going to die. And, uh, it's only been in the last four years that this tank slowly but surely is being uncovered, and it really is disheartening. The tank is not in ke, in keeping either, as a side note, with the Bioterrorism Act of 2002, which states water tanks need to be as inconspicuous as possible. It is reasonable to expect Epcor to be a friend to its neighboring customers, and each of you to be good stewards to Emerald Wash, just as you are to other areas of Fountain Hills. Please use your influence. Do not pass this situation off with an ineffective shrug and an attitude that we cannot do much about it. The town may not own Epcor, but you can have an impact. A casual drive-by is not as compelling as actually seeing the perspective of the homeowner. I invite anyone from the town government or Epcor Public Relations to call and set up a time to visit my house and patio. Take five minutes out of your day and view the jarring distraction that has been unveiled. Personal assessment will validate the concerns of many of the per, of the property owner's personal enjoyment of their homes, and also the potential resale of their property. I've been very encouraged by what I hear from Mr. Magazine and from Mr. Miller, and I look forward to some beautiful eucalyptus trees and a brown tank. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Uh, excuse me. No clapping, only for presentations, okay? If you haven't been here before, you don't know that.
Melody Kennedy, followed by Jim Sawiki.
Okay. Keep an eye on the lights. We give everybody three minutes, okay? When it turns red, you have to stop.
Uh, Melody Kennedy, I live in Fountain Hills on Borough Drive. My husband and I traveled 26,000 miles for six months to find the perfect place to live, and we chose Fountain Hills. We're right across, uh, from the tank. The Emerald Wash is right in front of us. Uh, I want to thank Marissa Moore. I spent some time with her today, looking at the plans around the tank. And, uh, if I'm not remembering this correctly, please correct me, but as I look at the plan, um, there are not any major trees planted along the Arroyo side. There's native and low shrub. There's no tall trees. There's been some planted along the Fountain Hills Boulevard side, but not along the Arroyo side. The wall is supposed to be painted. That's a little bit of help, but not much for the size of that wall. The inside of the, uh, area that they hollowed out is bare gray cement. It looks like a meteorite fell into this big hole, and we see it from absolutely every window of our house. It's just terrible. Now, um, the director of Public Government Affairs, Rebecca Stenholm, in the paper, she commented, and she said, "The new trees will be a mixture of mesquite, ironwood, and palaverde, and will provide additional screening." We spoke with the supervisor on site today, and he said, "The landscaping's done. We don't see anything done on the north side, or on the north side, along the Arroyo side." So we would like to recommend not perhaps eucalyptus, but, uh, natural trees native to the environment, um, not, uh, hackaronde, which are deciduous, which will lose all their leaves and be bare a good part of the year, but some of these that were already mentioned. And, um, we look forward to your cooperation, because we really do love living here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Jim Sawiki, followed by David Mailand.
I'm going to try not to repeat too much. Um, however, I, I would like to make, uh, cut to the chase and just make some clear, um, suggestions. We have a huge tank, we have a wall, and we have a hole with concrete poured on it. Let's get it all painted. Let's paint it all to blend in with the desert. And let's, let us get a group of people that live around that area, just a small committee, to meet with the Epcor people and the city to decide what color was, is going to work best for that desert environment, so that we, you know, we're looking at it every day, and we would like to be able to have some input as to what it's, you know, what the final color is going to be. I went around the tank today, and apparently, according to the superintendent, all the landscaping has been done. When you have saguaros and, uh, acatie, and a few small, a few small, uh, shrub trees planted in front of the wall, there's no screening there. And, uh, by the time these plants do mature, they're not even going to come close to, to screening off the tank. And I think what needs to be done is there needs to be a selection of good trees, sizable trees planted, and planted close enough, so that there, there is going to be some blockage, because what's there now, even when they're full grown, is not going to, um, hide the tank as it is now. So the saguaros and acatie's that are there now, they should probably be moved to another part of the property and replaced with larger trees. I think that's getting close to the end of it, other than communication. Uh, we have had two years of disruption from the work that's being done at the tank, and many, many a night, we've had to get up at night, close our doors and windows because of these motors that are running. Hopefully, this is all behind us now. I mean, we're looking forward to working, um, with the city and, and Epcor, but I think the communication is huge, and we need to have, uh, strong responsive people from Epcor and from the city, so that our group and the residents of that area can communicate effectively. A lot of communication has been directed to Epcor, and we've had no responses, and, um, usually when there is a response, there's no, no clear answer. And, and, uh, I think as residents of the city, we're entitled to that. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, and as everybody knows, a call to the public, it's not agendized, we're not really allowed to comment, but Macheska, Macheska stopped me if I say something wrong, but, you know, Grady and I did go out to see the site. We're absolutely aware of all your problems just by seeing it from Barbara's backyard. You weren't there, but we walked around your house, and I took some pictures, and so we're completely aware of the issues, and we have not had a chance to sit down with, uh, the executive, uh, executives of Epcor, but...
I do actually have an update.
We do plan to do that.
I do have an update.
You do? That's great.
Mr. St, uh, Jeff Stook, who is the Director of Operations from Epcor, reached out to me today, and, uh...
Great.
He wants to be a good neighbor. He wants Epcor to be a good neighbor to the residents, um, that live in that area, and has, uh, indicated that he will be communicating with, by letter, with all the residents there, and try to mitigate this to the point where, um, everyone is satisfied in the end.
That's great.
And so, um, anyways, I, I feel very confident we have worked with Mr. Stook in the past, and, and the staff at his level, so I have every bit of confidence that this is going to get resolved. Um, so you'll be hearing more from them, and, and the town will be also involved. There is a, um, landscape plan that has, um, yet to be, um, really implemented, and, um, there's also the painting of the, the fence that was mentioned, or the, the wall, and obviously, anything that could be done to help disguise it, so that it's not really seen like it was before, I think obviously that's what the neighbors want. And the photographs, by the way, Barbara, were very telling, um, the before shots that showed, um, how you couldn't even really see that that tank was there. And I'll make sure that that is shared with, uh, Mr. Stook as well. So, thank you.
And I also have all of your petitions, and so we'll also share that with them as well. Uh, do we still have call to the public?
Mayor, we have two more.
Okay.
So it's David Mailand, and then Karen Farkas.
You're welcome to still come up and...
Uh, Mayor, council members, Grady, uh, thanks for giving us the time to speak. I, I'm not going to echo everything that's been said, except stress that I think that it's, I think that it's imperative that this be resolved and taken care of, and made, um, a lot of, a lot of mistakes have been... of, a lot of mistakes have been made in the building of this, including the fact that none of us in the entire area were advised ahead of time, hey, we're coming in and we're taking over this whole area. In addition to the, the tank that looks horrible, they've denuded the whole area at the ground level also. But I want to repeat myself, it's imperative that something be done, and we hope that it'll get taken care of soon in cooperation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Karen Farkas.
Hi, I'm going to talk about another eyesore. I agree about the tank, by the way. I hike in that, in that ravine, and it is awful. But the eyesore I want to talk about is Park Place. I find both the shape of the buildings, which are a done deal, but more particularly the colors that have been applied to the buildings, to be awful. I understand there's a town palette for a commercial building, and I understand that certain colors were approved for this development, and I also understand that that is not the colors that are now appearing on the building. That tank is an awful thing, particularly for the people who live right in that neighborhood. Park Place is an eyesore to everyone who comes down the avenue of the, of the fountains. If it were a real park place on a monopoly board, perhaps the color would be appropriate. But it's not, and it's in Fountain Hills. And Fountain Hills has lovely, lovely buildings with desert-consistent colors and soft architecture. And I just want to know, and I know you can't comment, but it would be interesting to know how a company, a developer, is able to wrap counsel around their little finger by just choosing to ignore what has been approved and do whatever it is they want to do, and nothing happens. So that's what I want to say.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, Mayor.
Okay. We have a presentation, and it's not listed, but because of recent, recent issues that have happened, both in town and schools, our captain, Hank Brandemart, wanted to come forward and update everyone on what our police department is doing at this time. We've been getting lots of phone calls and emails and lots of suggestions from people on what we could be doing, not knowing that we have already been proactive on this and working with the captain. So he has kindly offered to come up today to give us an update. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, town staff, and members of the community. As we're all aware, February 14th, we had an incident in Florida that resulted in 17 deaths of mostly schoolchildren and school administrators. Tonight, I wanted to talk about what MCSO is doing here in town to mitigate some of the fear that may be associated with this particular event. First, I want to say we have an excellent relationship with Dr. Sweeney and the staff at the Fountain Hills Unified School District. We also work very well with the Fountain Hills Fire Department, and since the beginning of the school year, we've been working on updating their emergency response plans, making sure that we're compliant with what FEMA expects from us. We've recently completed threat assessments of the high school campus. We're currently reviewing the infrastructure on the other campuses here in town. That's being done through our Homeland Security Division. Prior to the event on February 14th, I submitted a request to have our SRO attend active shooter training at the Department of Homeland Security's Training Center in Anniston, Alabama. We have also scheduled an upcoming training event that will be held at the Queen Creek High School on March 14th. This will be done during their spring break, and it's an opportunity for our deputies, as well as some school administrators and some members of the Fountain Hills Fire Department, to actively participate in some real-life scenarios that are acted out on campus. In the future, I hope to bring that particular training here to Fountain Hills and, and do it at the Fountain Hills High School. I think that's best for our deputies here in town to be familiar with the layout of the school, the intricacies in dealing with a situation like that on our campus. And so that's one of the, the long-term plans, and when I say long-term, I hope it's in the next couple of months we'll get that done. So the question I keep getting asked is, what can we do to prevent this? It's not a one-size-fits-all answer. The best thing I can advise at this point is if you see something, say something. We have to know what people know. We have texted tip here in town for anonymous tips. We, MCSO, follows up on every tip that we receive. We actively investigate. We provide a written response to each tip that we receive, so we do take action. And I don't want to comment or criticize anyone's particular actions in the incident in Florida. I can only tell you what my expectation would be here in the town of Fountain Hills. Tips, though, are just that, it's a tip. It's not proof of any criminal or wrong activity that's being conducted. Saying someone is, and I hate to use this term, weird, isn't enough. Information that people supply should be specific and credible, and it should be information that we can act upon. This is a balance between people's individual rights and the need to keep the community safe, especially our children. We, and you've heard me say this up here at the podium before, we, as a community, need to take responsibility for what we know. If you're a parent, I would suggest you talk to your kids. They know more than they say. Reinforce they're not in any trouble for telling you information about someone that they know, and that the goal is to keep them safe. Communication here is the key. It prevents widespread panic, rumors, and it also gives us a foundation to do an adequate investigation and hopefully prevent incidents like this from happening. The current school of thought that's being taught is three basic things. It's either run, hide, or fight. If you can, run. If you can't, you hide. And if you decide to fight when faced with a threat, fight with intensity and commitment because you're fighting for your life. So that's what I wanted to present tonight, and I will entertain questions, concerns, comments, and try to answer them as best as I can.
It's certainly sad that we've come to this, huh?
For sure.
Where we have to, where we have to tell our kids how to protect themselves when they go to school, but...
Well, it's the ripple effect. This event happens 2,500 miles away, and we feel it here in Fountain Hills.
Absolutely.
Mayor.
Councilman Willa Jay.
Captain, thanks for being here this evening. You used an acronym, SRO. For the benefit of the public, could you tell us what a SRO is and what their role is in our schools, because I think it's critical.
Yes. One of the things that I was blessed to have when I took over as commander here is the support of the council. As part of the contract with MCSO, the town pays for a dedicated SRO or a school resource officer. What that officer does is he provides campus security, he deals with minor threat issues, he also is a conduit to interact with our kids and reduce the stigma associated with law enforcement. We're not as big, bad, and evil as some people would like to portray us. We are people, just like everybody else. And so what I hope to get out of the SRO program is a sense of support and hope. Our current SRO, Deputy Mike Brooks, has worked very hard this school year to develop a great relationship, not only with the staff and the administration, but he's out there every day with the kids. He visits the other campuses, although he's technically full-time assigned to the high school. He does make it a regular point to go over and take care of our crosswalks on Fountain Hills Boulevard. He does interact and eat lunch with our preschoolers and kindergarteners, and I think that's where we make our greatest impact. What we do on the front end will often pay dividends on the back end. And so if we can make that connection with our grade school children, hopefully that will reduce some of the problem as they get older. As we all know, it's tough to be a teenager, and I think they're finding ways outside of the norm to deal with their anger, and so we need to do a better job of supporting them, and I think that's what the school resource officer does.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Magazine.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate your aggressiveness in reacting to what happened in Parkland. I'd be less than candid if I didn't say that I don't have a lot of confidence. I just don't have a lot of confidence. In Parkland, apparently, the authorities had visited this family, including the kid, walked away and said, "No problem." But even if they'd seen a problem, or if they thought they had a problem, if somebody called you and said, "You know, we're worried about this kid," what can you do about it?
You know, that's the question I truly don't have the answer to. I will tell you, from what I know about the incident in Florida, everybody did a lot of things correct. They trained for this. The SRO was on campus. Like you said, they had gone out and made contact with this individual. I think a lot of it's based on what we now know as implicit bias. We apply our own values to what we see. And so part of that is, it's easy to see a kid that's struggling as opposed to a threat to our community. And maybe that's the breakdown. I don't know. I'm not a psychologist. I'm not qualified to make those, those assessments, but I can only tell you that I take what I do here very seriously, and I know, as we've talked in the past, that trickles down to the line-level employees. Part of being effective is being engaged, and I hope that's what you expect and see from us here in town.
I, a lot of this apparently emanates from social media. And even if you, a student expresses themselves on social media and you get worried about what they have to say, is there anything legal you can do?
You know, it all depends on the wording and phrasing of what's posted on social media. As we all know, the First Amendment protects free speech, so he can make specific comments. You know, I have a teenager that he games, he puts his headphones on, and he's on the laptop, and he's on the online community, and some of the stuff I hear come out of his room at times is not the kid that lives in my house, that's the kid that's living in his online world. I don't know where the balance to strike here is between reality versus the online world. I think a lot of people post things on the internet and have no expectation that anybody's ever going to see it, yet it does have a profound impact. And so, again, it's, it's a balance between a person's individual rights versus the community safety, and so I don't think we can afford to take these issues lightly.
Mayor, one final thing, if I may. Your responses lead me to the following, and it's certainly not something I particularly want to see. But in Parkland, they're talking seriously about metal protectors at schools. If you can't stop a kid, whether it's on social media, home visit, whatever, is that something you've even thought about?
You know, we have talked about that a little bit, and I think it's counterproductive to the learning environment to make it a prison environment. I don't know. This is, this is something that needs, this is a discussion that really needs to occur on a much larger scale. It needs to involve the school district, what they're comfortable with. I think from a parent's perspective, you want your children to be safe, but you also don't want them to live in a militaristic state where they see armed guards everywhere or they're in, in automatic fear for their safety because why do we have so many officers? I will talk about an incident that occurred in another patrol district, and it was very, very recently. It was a lipstick threat written on the girl's bathroom mirror. Statistically, nothing's going to happen. However, the captain in that particular patrol district reached out and pulled in additional resources for the day. He had plainclothes officers on campus in addition to the school resource officer. He pulled in additional patrol resources for that day, and he was criticized by parents because he was too overreactive to the situation. And so I guess the, the thing that I struggle with is, what's the right thing to do? I mean, I think that's an appropriate response because we're talking about the safety of our kids. But for someone who doesn't work in my profession or doesn't have the experience level that I do to say that we overreacted, I think that's not a fair criticism. And so again, I, I, this is something that's up for a greater discussion because it's, it's beyond my scope. Police, policing is naturally a reactive profession. Something has to happen before we actually do something, and so it's kind of like that Tom Cruise movie where he was predicting crimes. I don't know the name of it. I wish we could have something like that because that would resolve a lot of problems. It's, it's just not practical at this point.
Councilman Yates.
Thank you. Captain, thank you for doing this. I was concerned, like probably everybody in here, about where are we with this, and so I reached out to the captain. We met this morning, and I was glad to hear that we're not reactive, we're proactive, that a lot of these things you've already had in place, this just kind of solidifies. But could you talk to, you brought to the topic about some of the training, the certifications, working across boundaries, as well as with the school, et cetera, just about, I mean, you can't prepare for everything, obviously, but the fact that we're proactive and we have a proactive approach, we're not waiting for something to happen, we're trying to prepare for it.
That's correct. In order to, to conduct training, the response plan has to be in place and it has to be approved by FEMA. We are in the process of getting that done. We have been looking at a number of different scenarios throughout the school year. Dr. Sweeney has been very supportive of this. The high school principal has been supportive. As you know, I know that you've attended some of the coalition meetings, and we discuss issues of importance to the community outside of drugs and some of the other things. Getting our people trained is extremely important. One of the things I found out was, when we respond to a scene like that, I was surprised to find out that one of the first things we don't do is we don't administer first aid to wounded people because we are in a threat assessment mode. We're actually looking for someone. And so that's counterintuitive to what we do because we're trained to help. And that's part of why the training is so important. You're asking human beings to do something outside their normal scope of human thought. Take care of other people, help, fight the fear factor. Everybody's running, it's chaos. Target identification's important. Somebody pops out from a hallway thinking that you're there to help them, and we misidentify. This is why the training is extremely important. One of the things that we've been talking about since I got here was putting on a full-scale training scenario at the high school. We are in the beginning stages of doing that. It's a lot more complicated than I initially anticipated, but we do hope to have something here very, very, very soon. The timing of last week's event is coincidental because we had been working on a number of these training issues and planning events prior to that. So I don't want to use a cliche, we were late to the party, but we were actually ahead of the game, kind of thing.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just wanted to quickly say thank you to the captain and the men and women that patrol the district. I have many, you know, young kids at elementary school, and they did have a hard conversation that night. You know, they, they thought school was like the safest place to be, and you, and your presence is very impactful and valuable, and I see your deputies there in the mornings, you know, they're, they're around in the afternoons, but they're around other times too, not just looking for speeders. So I appreciate just being around, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
You know, when I was in high school, it was the, the hard conversation was the birds and the bees. And now we're, we're talking about a completely different animal, so.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're trying to be proactive, we're trying to be aggressive in responding to this, but also at the same time, as I mentioned several times, it's a balance of people's individual rights versus what we think or what we assume about somebody, and so that's, that's the challenge.
Well, I think that the total mindset of students, parents, teachers has changed over the years with so many of these incidents happening, and they realize that the training, even the training and the, and the practice of students going through these scenarios, it's not to frighten the students but to, or to frighten the parents, but to reassure them that if something does happen, we all know what to do, and we will be saving lives by following a certain procedure, just like what was done, lockdowns and, and practicing things so that, I mean, you used to do that with fire, it's what you do with fire drills. It's so that when something does happen, you know exactly where you go and what you do, and, and that gives us students confidence that they do have a safety in school.
Correct. I have a junior in high school, and so, you know, having that councilman DePorter's kids at Coffee with a Cop this past Saturday, it's, it's difficult. You know, I can talk to my 17-year-old differently than he can... You know, I can talk to my 17-year-old differently than he can talk to his 10-year-old. And I think the conversation that's appropriate is whatever you think that they can handle. I talked to mine about what happened in Florida, and he kind of was like, "Yeah, yeah, I'm not going to worry about it." Well, I am. He goes to school in a district that I don't patrol, I'm not responsible for. I'm responsible for what happens here in Fountain Hills. And so, that's my emphasis on safety, and so that's what we look forward to doing.
Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you for being here. I feel Fountain Hills is lucky and blessed to have you and your staff and your deputies here. I so appreciate you being proactive on this and bringing it to the council and telling the citizens that we are, we are being proactive. I think it's a huge step for us, and I truly mean thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Tolles.
Thank you. I would echo Councilman Brown's comments, and I'd also ask you if you can comment on maybe some of the best practices in other communities, maybe in Arizona or outside of Arizona. In my own thinking, I think of, this day and age, the security of the kids is critical. And God forbid we ever have an issue in Fountain Hills, Arizona. It would be tragic, that matter anywhere. But college campuses have security. They have security forces on campus. They have check gates that you can't get into.
Full-fledged police.
Full-fledged police departments. They have significant security. We used to have a pretty active posse in town. And first comment on the best practices, and if you could, and I understand you don't want to create a police state, but I do support on-campus security at every school, and I personally would be in favor of that. How would you possibly implement something like that?
Well, you know, if it was up to me, we'd have an officer on every campus. And I mean dedicated, full-time, on-campus, dealing with campus issues. When we looked at some of the target hardening choices, the middle school is light-years ahead of some of the other school campuses that we have. If you've been in the lobby, it's kind of a vestibule where you're kind of held there until they grant you access to the campus. Is that the be-all, end-all to campus safety? I don't know. I mean, somebody who's truly dedicated to what they want to do, and if you go as far back as Columbine High School, those teenagers had a plan, and they had been thinking about it for a long time. And that was the first time that we truly were exposed to what could happen, because we just assumed that they're just troubled kids. As far as best practices, you know, I think being proactive, having a school officer on campus, you know, we're lucky here in Fountain Hills. All of our other patrol districts, I think this is the only one that has a full-time, dedicated school resource officer. Even in Queen Creek, who's also very, they're very proactive down there, their officer is funded by grant funding. And so every three years, they submit a grant application, and then it's a scramble for what small pot of money is available. And so it's a credit to the council being, having the forethought to ensure that we have an officer on campus. You know, you can lock the doors. We talked about self-locking doors, where you can use a swipe card or punch a code. We talked about having a code-red system, if you will. Every student seems to have a cellphone in their pocket anymore. And sending out a text. Well, the problem is, I can show you statistically from the FBI studies, that most of the school shootings, almost 95-plus percent of them are students or former students. So when you're sending out a text, a security caution text, something's happening on campus, he's getting it, too. This is our worst nightmare, and I don't have an answer for it.
Anyone else? Anyone else have any questions for the captain or comments? All right. Thank you so much for coming tonight, and I know this was not planned, so we appreciate you coming here and hopefully hearing all this. Students, parents, and just the general community will at least have some comfort knowing that your whole department is being proactive and looking at best possible safety measures for our students.
Well, thank you. Like I said, I think the key to all of this is communication. Communication between the students, the parents, the school administration, law enforcement, and again, I'm going to say "we." We need to have a conversation.
Right. We're very fortunate that everybody is talking together. Yes. Okay.
Right.
Thank you, Captain. Okay, we have a consent agenda, and all I need is a motion to, a motion to approve as listed.
So moved.
And a second, and now we need a roll call for that.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Porter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Tolles?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Leger? Mayor 7-0.
Thank you. We'll start with our regular agenda, consideration of renaming the Avenue of the Fountain Plaza to Morgan Park. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council. This item before you originally was to consider renaming the Avenue of the Fountain Plaza to Morgan Park, and my understanding is that there's been some recent concepts which had not been previously considered, which was naming a portion of the plaza rather than the entire stretch of the road from La Montana down to Suaro. We did have a staff presentation, but I think this might be better for, at this point, to have a discussion from the council on this item.
Vice Mayor Brown, would you like to start that discussion?
Thank you. Thank you, Grady. I think it's a good idea to recognize Sharon Morgan. She has been very instrumental in this town for many, many years. She's a past mayor. She's been with the sister city. Her resume is lengthy, and I think that having the Avenue of the Fountain Plaza as an opportunity to be utilized as an area to reward the people that, not only today, but in the future, would like, that the council would like to appoint or give a portion of as a resignation of the Avenue of the Fountain. And I, my perception would be, since Sharon is the first one, I would propose that we dedicate the area from Suaro Boulevard West to the turnaround, which is probably 100, 150 feet, which is a very simply designated area by streets. But I also would like to talk to the council and ask the council to consider possibly a work-study session to look at the entire Avenue of the Fountain Plaza and segment it, so as this comes up in the future, that we will have an area that we can utilize, because at the time, at this time, we really don't. We gave Keith McMahon a street, but the interesting part of that is, there were no addresses that had to be changed on the street. And if we were to rename a small street that is already named, it would be difficult to go back and reassign or redo all of the addresses. So I think that having a town-owned property that we could segment down to and possibly utilize for an event like this is something that we should truly look at. And that's my idea.
Okay. Comments? Councilman Mag, all right, Councilman Yates?
Thank you, Mayor. Dennis, I think it's a tremendous idea, the work-study session. We have so many resources and spots in town that kind of lend itself for these type of naming opportunities. And we've already had, who's the town manager, the city behind?
Paul Norden.
Paul Norden, thank you. Paul Norden Parkway, but Jerry Miles, you know, John Cotillo, and these things come up, and you want to honor, and they don't just have to be elected officials, they could be anybody. But originally, when we talked, I thought, oh, this is a no-brainer, Sharon Morgan, how much she's done for Avenue. But I think this is a tremendous idea, and it doesn't have to be just segments of the park, there could be the art nodes, there's all sorts of naming opportunities. But so many people do so many good things for this community, it just lends itself to create this opportunity, so that when we have that opportunity, we've got a spot to do it. So I think it's a great idea.
All right. Councilman Magazine?
Yeah, I think it's, Vice Mayor, I think it's a great idea, too, to have a work-study. But I wonder if we could broaden it a bit to discuss naming generally in addition, because I suspect there'll be other things that'll come up over time, and if we have some policy of some kind that goes beyond the plaza, it might be helpful to us.
If I may, too, we do have a policy, but I think it would be nice for the council to look at it and see if it's time to maybe refresh it. And so, when we do have the work session scheduled, we'll go ahead and include that as part of the packet, so you get to see that in advance.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with you, Councilman Magazine. We had a lengthy, lengthy discussion before we ever came up with the final name of Avenue of the Fountain Plaza. And I can see, I can see spending another hour and a half, two hours, renaming not only the plaza, but coming up with a systematic way of naming the areas. So I totally agree with your thought pattern.
Okay, so, just for clarification, are you suggesting that we have a total work-study on everything, or now are you proposing that small area for Sharon Morgan, and then a study on the rest of it?
I am actually proposing that we dedicate the very, the very first section to Sharon Morgan. I don't think that we want to name that section tonight, but I think we want to dedicate, or at least reserve, that very first section. I think reserve would be the right terminology. So, when we have the naming section approved, we'll be able to at least put her name on that section.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
I could make that a motion.
Please do.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Is there any speaker cards on this item?
Okay.
Then, on in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Okay. And Sharon couldn't be here because she's working. She's working on the fair, and you know how involved that is. So, that's why she couldn't be here today. But she's just thrilled that we're even thinking about naming something after her. Consideration of, consideration of resolution 2018-05 abandoning whatever right title or interest the town has in a certain hillside protection easement located at the rear property line of Diamante del Lago, Lot 75, 13604 North Bonita Drive, as recorded in Book 516, Page 17, records of Maricopa County, Arizona. All right, let's start with Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Marissa Moore, who is our senior planner and has a much better handle on what this particular subject's about. So I'll turn it over to her for her report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. All right, we'll try and make this short and sweet, because we have been here for a little while, and we have a ways to go. All right, this property is located at 13602 North Bonita Drive. It is in Diamante del Lago subdivision. The subdivision was created in 1999, and part of that subdivision, as staff believes, the hillside protection easements were put in place to meet that requirement for hillside protection easements, as well as open space requirements. Had this property been platted today, I'm sorry, there's the specific property right there. I don't want to push the wrong button here. Which one is it? Well, it's not working. Okay. Okay, I'm still going to use yours, if that's okay. All right. Okay. Here's the subject property right here. As you can see on the sides of it here, there is no development. That is open space area, and that is owned and maintained by the town. The area that they are requesting to have vacated, well, the HPE abandoned, is in the rear here. So had this property been platted today, there would not be this requirement for an HPE on it. It is a small lot, and current zoning would not have required that for this size lot. So the reason for this request is, prior to the current property owner's purchase of the property, some development had happened in that HPE area, specifically like a patio and some plantings. The neighbor has had an issue with some of the plantings in that rear area, and because there is this encroachment, there has been a request for the property owner to remove the stuff. Short of having this property owner remove everything, one of the options for rectifying the situation would be to vacate that hillside protection easement, and therefore it would not be encroaching into a hillside protection easement. This would not affect any utilities or drainage, and therefore, staff recommends approval of abandoning this HPE. And the property owner is here, if you have questions.
Questions for Marissa? Speaker Card, yes.
Richard Carr.
Okay. Okay, Richard, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I was hoping that you had read my application. It's a seven-page application that has, I think, 20 bullet points outlining the situation. So this is a very short, very, very short introduction to put a face on this. This is my wife, Claire. And she told me not to say this, but this is the face that I prefer you keep in mind. Upon learning that an easement exists on my property, plus that a portion of the landscaping and patio installed by the former owner are in violation of it, I've been proactive in both notifying the town of Fountain Hills and seeking a remedy. I instigated meetings with Mr. Ken Valberti and Robert Rogers in January 2015, and again with Mr. Rogers in April 2015, and on both occasions, was advised I would not be penalized in any way for these violations. I met with Marissa Moore and Randy Harrell in April 2017, during which I was advised to submit the abandonment application now before you. I again met with Mr. Harrell in January 2018, to make sure all i's are dotted and t's crossed. I have respectfully done everything that the town has asked me to do in preparation for your decision tonight. Allow me to emphasize four points, and then I'll sit down. Number one, the HPE violations at issue have been there for approximately 11 years now and are not of my making. I inherited them. Number two, on October 30th, 2017, I fully informed my homeowners' association about this petition, providing them with a copy of my abandonment application, plus all salient supporting documents. There is nothing secret about this appeal tonight. Three, should my abandonment application be approved, I'm not aiming to construct anything within the area. I simply want a remedy of violation I inherited and maintain my property. This is what any insightful homeowner would do. And lastly, again, the law that mandated easements on the Diamante subdivision has been amended such that future hillside developments of similar-sized lots no longer require such easements. Respectfully, council members, the violation on my property involves an antiquated issue. Please, please, make it go away tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for the applicant or Marissa?
Marissa, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Leger?
And before that, sir, we did have an opportunity to review your documentation in our packet, so appreciate your very detailed overview of the issue and the history. So we do have that, and we are aware of that. Marissa, in the event that council decides to abandon the HPE, I was just curious to know, currently, it's under our kind of watch, so when the HPE- So when the HPE goes away, who would then be involved in any decision-making regarding that particular piece of property? Would it defer to the HOA? Would the HOA now have authority to remediate future issues that may come up in that regard?
Mayor, Councilman Legay, what would happen is, whatever restrictions or requirements that the HOA may have for any activities in that rear yard would then apply to this property.
Okay, very good. So there would be some decision-maker now that the town would be out of that process if we choose to abandon this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you see this as opening up the floodgates for everybody in that subdivision to request the abandonment of their easements?
We have discussed this, sorry, Mayor, and Councilman Brown. We have discussed this amongst staff, given the restrictions that we had for open space and HPE when this was platted back in 1999, and the differences. It is something we would consider. However, it would have to be on a case-by-case basis. If we were to do it all at once, it would be rather time-consuming for staff, but if that was the request, of course, we would move forward with doing that. If they came in on a case-by-case basis, again, we would evaluate, does it affect drainage? Basically, that's it, does it affect drainage? And then we would evaluate and then come to council on that basis.
Good answer.
So theoretically, it could.
It could, especially this particular subdivision. If you've taken the trail, the overlooked trail, you will see where several of the people that own these units have abandoned, or have at least extended their decks out 10, 12 feet, and have utilized the land behind them. So I'm just curious if, in fact, there was a method to go ahead and do it all, but you're saying that it'll be on a case-by-case basis.
If there was a request for staff to investigate that as a whole for the subdivision, like I said, it would be time-consuming for us.
I would never do that. Just curious.
But it could happen, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Tollis?
Thank you, Mayor. In the beginning of this presentation, you had made reference to the neighbor making the complaint. Why is the neighbor making a complaint? Is it doing something to his views? Is it, what's the reason for the complaint from the neighbor in regards to this particular situation?
Mayor, Councilman Tollis, so as far as I understand, and the applicant can further clarify, there was some vegetation placed in that rear yard area that was blocking their view. And that is one of the concerns that was expressed by the neighbor, that the HPE not only was protecting it from development, the patio and so forth, but it was also protecting his view. One of the things that I discussed with them was, if we, for example, did not abandon the HPE, and it was required to be, the patio and so forth was required to be pulled out, and he had to revegetate it back to hillside protection easement standards, a tree could naturally grow there. So that's something to consider. I don't know that it necessarily would.
Just have a follow-up, if I may. So I live in an HOA, and we have very strict rules in regards to the neighbors planting anything that would obstruct our views. We have beautiful views of Red Rock and McDowell's, and that's already in our HOA documents. In this particular case, and the owner had expressed that he had bought the home, it was already there, is this new vegetation that's now been planted in this particular area that was not planted when he bought the house?
Correct. My understanding is that this is more landscape vegetation. When the rear area had the patio put in, my understanding is at that time some landscaping was put in.
Okay, sure, come on up.
All the vegetation at issue was installed by the prior owner. We put nothing new in. I bought the property in 2009. This is a marathon. All the vegetation at issue was put in by the prior owner, and Claire and I have kept it cut down, kept it trimmed to the same way it was when we bought the property. And there were no objections raised about this between 2009 and 2012, not a peep. My application indicates that I modified this patio by putting a flagstone in it in 2011, and I had full approval by my HOA and the Architectural Committee, plus the president of my HOA personally walked the patio with Claire and I at that time to understand what we were doing. And there were no objections raised by anyone, no mention of the hillside protection easement, which I believe is because that had become antiquated and no one knew about it, or they forgot about it.
I would like to add that we did look at aerials, historic aerials of the property, if I may. And as of 2007, the patio had already been there, and the applicant just stated they bought the property in 2009. So at some point prior to 2007, the patio and landscaping was installed.
Any other questions for Marissa? Do you have speaker cards? No? Okay.
Mayor, you know, not to make this any more difficult than it needs to be, but it seems to me that if the previous owner was already using this area that was an easement that he, they should, that was restricted and they couldn't, could not use, and the new owner buys the property, the old owner apparently does not, does not provide that information that it's a nonusable area. The title company doesn't provide the information that it's an easement, that you're not supposed to use it. The HOA is out there approving plans in their HOA to use an easement that's not supposed to be used, and now somebody's called, you know, called them out on it. And I would think that the previous owner has some liability here. This owner may not have bought that property, and the hardship that now he's going through, this is real. How we just sign off on this, it's a tough, tough call. I mean, I think it's something that we really need to think through, all of these other properties that are going through the same thing. I think you're going to really have to address this as a whole.
Comments from the council?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution 2018-5.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
I'd also, we have a second, I'd also like to say that any of these other issues and easements, we address for all of those property owners, and we resolve this for the whole community so that we don't have a hardship like this in the future. I would think that there's going to be, the rest of the neighbors will be lining up to have this resolved as well. As you had stated, that there's other properties that have the same situation, correct?
Correct. As Councilman Brown had stated, yes, there are other properties in the area that have encroached into that HPE.
All for one, one for all.
Okay, I do have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no other council discussion, then I'll call for all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Good job, guys. Only took five years, huh?
Marissa, good job. Just stay there. Consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Fountain Hills and the Fountain Hills Dark Sky Association outlining the duties and responsibilities for maintaining the International Dark Sky Association, Dark Sky Community designation.
Mayor, council, this memorandum of understanding is basically a way for town staff and the members of the Fountain Hills Dark Sky Association to distinguish the duties and responsibilities that are required for us to maintain this designation. Not only did we have to go through a process to apply for this designation, but we will have to provide an annual report, and there are criteria that have to be met and then documented for that annual report. So we will be sharing these responsibilities and duties, and we just wanted to make sure that they were outlined as to who was going to be required to do what.
Okay. It's a good time to do that.
That's awesome. Now that you got the designation, hey, you got stuff to do here.
Work hasn't ended.
I think they knew their job wasn't over yet.
It's the beginning.
Okay, do we need a motion for this? We do? Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
To approve.
Mayor, second.
All right, any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
I think they, we just approved more work for you, Nancy and Joe.
Sherrod.
Yes, and the whole crew. All right, next item. There will be one staff report for items seven through nine, with public comment taking during item number eight on ordinance 18-03. For the council, we will also need separate motions. So let's start with number seven, consideration of resolution 2018-04 declaring a public record that certain document filed with the town clerk and entitled the Fountain Hills Senior Living Planned Area Development, case number Z2017-14. Grady, Melissa?
I'll go ahead and turn it over to Marissa. Marissa has a detailed staff report that she'll be providing on these three items.
Mayor, council, this property is located at 9,700 North Saguaro Boulevard, which is generally behind the Circle K and the McDonald's and Senior Taco located at the corner of Shea and Saguaro. There are a number of requests that are being asked for with this planned area development project, and I'll go through them one by one, just so that if there are any questions, I can try and give you a synopsis of what these requests are for. The first one is to rezone the property from a C1 base zoning district, which has a 25-foot maximum height limit, to a C2 base zoning to allow for a 40-foot maximum height limit. The reason for this request is that there is a portion of the property that would go above that 25-foot height limit, and the applicant can further detail exactly where that is located on the building. The second one is to allow two 40-foot wide entrances along East Trevino Drive. Normally, we would not allow for an entrance to be that wide. It is a request on their part that I don't believe, and I do have the town engineer here to help out with some of this traffic engineering stuff, that I don't believe that is something that we would normally allow, but I'm not sure that it is actually, okay, that it is actually not, that it is actually prohibited in the town code. Number three, waive the requirement for an eight-foot-high masonry fence near the rear of the site. The rear of the site is adjacent to the single-family residential properties to the north, and because of the slope of the property, putting an eight-foot tall wall there, the intent of which would be to block some of the visual impact, as well as give a barrier for traffic to the residential properties to the north. Because of the slope of the property, there really would be no point in putting that wall there, because the property is located relatively far down. Having the wall at the top of that slope is not really going to provide any buffer. Number four, allow five-foot separation between the building walls and the drive aisle. Normally, we require there to be a 10-foot separation between the drive aisle and the wall, so that there's area for pedestrians to move around. They're requiring it to that be reduced down to five feet, so that they can maximize the parking area, and just the way the site is designed in certain locations, that's where this request is being made for. Allow the height of the entry sign to be measured from finish grade. Normally, we would have it measured from existing grade. Again, because of the slope of the property, it would be below the drive aisles and so forth, so they would like to have that measured from finish grade. Allow a reduction in the required landscaping plant material amounts. The reason for this request is that there, the current landscape requirements, looking at a practical perspective, the number of plants that would go in when they mature would eventually probably kill each other off, because it is a dense landscaping requirement. The reason for them to then request this was to reduce some of that initial cost. And as we'll get to, the Planning and Zoning Commission has requested that that plant material, while it's reduced, go in at a larger size, to kind of compensate for that reduction in the initial landscaping. Number seven, extend the sidewalk along North Saguaro Boulevard from the north property line to Monterey Drive in lieu of a sidewalk along Burkimo. That's just finishing what is already on Saguaro, taking it up to Monterey, and because there really is no pedestrian traffic along Burkimo, it makes sense to do that swap. Allow off-site drainage to be routed to North Saguaro Boulevard. The current off-site drainage goes through this property. They're wanting their stormwater management plan to route that onto North Saguaro, and their engineer can further explain that. Number nine, allow a 10-foot roadway easement in lieu of right-of-way reduction. Allowing for an easement, instead of dedicating that 10-foot area as right-of-way, allows them to have their setback from their property line, and if they were to dedicate that 10 feet of right-of-way, their property line would move in 10 feet, and that would make their property lose some space because of that setback for development activities. And 10, allow an entrance to be two feet greater than the maximum of 28 feet to construct a 30-foot-wide driveway entrance on Burkimo Drive. So here is where the site would be located, right here. And this is McDonald's, this is Circle K, and this is Saguaro, and this is Shea. It is approximately 5.74 acres in size. Here is the proposed site plan. So the building has this layout right here. The right-of-way is right here, they would be extending the sidewalk right there. These are the residential properties to the north. This is a slope down, and it would have terracing and landscaping throughout. There are courtyards in the middle of the building. And then here is the proposed landscaping. I'm just showing it for your entertainment, I guess, because it's kind of hard to tell what it's showing right there. But it is showing the landscaping having the reduced amount. When you look at landscape plans, sometimes it's a little bit deceptive that the size of the circles don't necessarily equal the size of what the plants will look like in So here are the floor plans. I tried to line it up as best I could. First floor, second floor, as you see, extends it further to the west over here. And then the third floor is primarily in the middle. And I'd like to say that blue area there is the memory care, and the rest of the building is assisted living and independent living. There's proposed to be 178 rooms and 90 parking spaces. The 90 parking spaces are more than what would be required by our code. The building has a footprint of approximately 75,000 square feet, and then it goes up, and it will be approximately 150,000 square feet of floor area total. These are some basic elevations. This would be if you were on Trevino looking straight at the property. One thing that I'd like to point out is, the property slopes up, so that, and the applicant has a better diagram of this. The majority of the property actually is only 25 feet above the existing grade, which would be allowed with the base C1 zoning district. But when you are on Trevino, it's going to look taller, because you're looking at it from here. So you're going to see this all the way up to there, but it still is relatively close to that 25-foot max height limit. This went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and their recommendations, which have primarily, for the most part, been addressed by the applicant, were to provide larger landscaping plants as a trade-off for the reduction in the number of plants. I mentioned that earlier, that their resubmital for this presentation did include that. Increase the number of plants in the northwest corner of the lot. There is some visual and residential impact in that area that one of the neighbors requested that they up the number of plants in that corner, and the applicant has shown that on their plans. Provide trees and taller plants along the south building wall. This is the south building wall. And so to help break that up, because there was, this is one of the areas where that reduction from 10 feet to 5 feet of the space between the drive aisle and the building, the request had been for that specific location. I believe that they have widened that and then shown that there are larger trees put in that area. Ensure rooftop equipment is screened, and I, it's not evident on this slide, but they do show that, and they'll be able to provide that in their presentation, what that looks like now. Widen East Trevino Drive from North Saguaro Boulevard to, sorry about the typo there, to... to Burkimo Drive, and they have done that initially. They had only widened it right here for a turn lane in there, so that traffic could bypass it. Now they are showing that it goes the entire length of the property, that it's been widened. Create an entry sign that better blends in with the building structure. That's subjective. They have provided a more defined design for that. And then bring the height of the building as much as possible down, since the base zone is twenty-five feet, and they have made efforts to do that. In fact, I believe that they reduced the, the ceiling height inside of the building so that they could pull it down. So with these stipulations, Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded a recommendation that the town council approve the P A D as presented, and staff also recommends approval. And the applicant is here, if you have desire to see their presentation.
Okay, I got a lot of questions, but who wants to start? Vice Mayor?
Certainly.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here, and they do have a presentation.
Okay, I, on the, on the ten items that are requested, I would like an explanation for item number eight, where we're taking the drainage underneath out to Saguaro. I'd like to see how that's working. And I would like to know if the ten-foot easement along Trevino is a parking easement to park on the street, because currently it's pretty much no parking for the first probably two-hundred-and-fifty feet past McDonald's. And those are the only two that I have questions on.
So both of those would be better answered by the town engineer and the applicant's engineer?
That'd be fine.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Eric Winters. I'm a civil engineer with EPS Group, located in Mesa. So to first answer your question about off-site drainage, there is significant off-site drainage that comes from the northwest of the property, as well as due north. And we intend to pick up this drainage via inlets, and then route the drainage via storm drain pipe along the north, northern portion of, of the property. Historically, this drainage goes through a swell that starts up at the northwest corner of the property, and discharges at the southeast corner at Segoro. So the idea is to capture it where it first enters the property along the north in three locations, and run it along the north, and then discharge at the northeast corner onto Segoro. So this drainage, where we're discharging it on Segoro, it, it ends up there historically, anyway. I will tell you that this, this, this flow will decrease, because where historically rainwater that falls on the property would run off, we're actually going to retain that.
And Randy, are you, if I could, please? And you're in agreement with this?
Yes, sir, they're providing detention for the off-site stormwater.
Okay, they are going to retain it?
Yes, detain.
Detain.
So meter it out slowly.
Very good. And then the ten-foot easement on the street?
So we, we recognize with, with widening the street that we need to either dedicate additional right-of-way or roadway easement, was the two options that staff presented to the developer. The developer chose the ten-foot roadway easement option instead of right-of-way, and that is simply for the roadway, not for parking on the road or parking on site.
It's not for street parking at all?
No.
Not taken into consideration?
Nope.
Thank you.
Yep.
More questions? Yes, we have quite a few speaker cards. If council wants to go to speakers first, we can do that.
They have a presentation?
Do you have a presentation? Oh, okay, sure. Oh, okay, thanks. Yeah, I forgot about that. Can you imagine that?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
That's the only reason I've been here twenty years. I'm tired of it.
Good evening, my name is Chris Russ. I'm with C A Senior Living. Thank you. I'm Chris Russ with C A Senior Living. I'm a vice president of development with them. I just want to briefly tell you about C A before I get into the project. C A, we're based out of Chicago. Senior Living is part of a larger C A Ventures company that also develops student housing, multifamily, commercial lands, hotels. We're talking, obviously, about our Senior Living division here tonight. We're owners and developers of those types of properties, and we hire out third-party operators to operate them for us. So our plan is to, to develop these properties, hold on to them in an ownership capacity, and let these professional operators operate them for us. You know, we identify markets of need. We use third-party market research companies to, to identify the target demographics, and we've had a lot of positive information here in Fountain Hills, and have been looking for a piece of property for some time before this piece came available to us. This is an independent assisted living and memory care community that we're proposing, so really a continuum of care. It'll constitute studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. This isn't a nursing home. It's just, as I said, we're kind of in the middle there. We're, we're above the fifty-five and older community, but we're not skilled nursing or hospice care. We're the, the middle three components of that continuum of care. We have a very amenity-rich, amenity-rich building. Really, this is, it's a luxury complex for our residents with, with multiple dining options, from formal dining, casual dining, private dining with theaters, multiple activity rooms, you know, a golf simulator, a chapel. You know, in particular here, we'll, we'll show you hopefully on the elevation, we've actually got a rooftop terrace that you can walk out on, that we're specifically, with all these conversations about dark sky and astronomy are excited about, and could hopefully even host events there, that sort of thing. Marissa did a great job, obviously, of introducing the project. I think you're familiar with where the site is. We have gone through the site plan, so I won't spend a lot of time on that. Really what I'll, I'll focus on are the changes we made since planning commission in addressing their comments. In particular, the, the larger plants as a trade-off for the reduced number of plants. We have upsized a number of plants, starting with the shrubs and the trees, and also have a, a team of folks here. We've got our architect, civil engineer, and a landscape architect here, so any specific questions, they can also help answer as well. So we've upsized, you know, shrubs from three-gallon to five gallons. We've got certain trees going from fifteen gallons to twenty-four inch, and then, as you see in the, the red dots on the screen, we've actually upsized our, our largest thirty-six-inch box trees to forty-eight inch, to really show some scale when these plants actually go in. So you're not seeing that typical development, that's, that's planting small things, hoping that they'll grow up large. We're, we're coming in with some good-sized specimen trees to begin with, as recommended from planning and zoning. Along the, the southern side of the building, Marissa had pointed out, it used to be only about five feet between the, the building wall and the, the sidewalk there. And this is somewhat related to our ask for the reduced ten-foot down to five-foot from building to drive aisle, and I just want to point out, and correct me if I'm wrong, that at this point, we now meet that everywhere, except for a couple pinch points, one being right here on the corner, one being right there, and I believe the other is right there when it turns into the, the entranceway there. I believe all those areas are now approximately nine feet, where the, the regulation was ten feet. So predominantly, this, this southern area, let me get back to that slide. This was the biggest affected area, which we have now widened out past that ten feet. So we've got at least ten feet of area for planting in, in there, and you can see that we've added shrubbery, and then also taller trees to help break up that three-story facade on that side. Again, as Marissa mentioned, the traffic study that was performed only had us widening Trevino up just past, right here, just, just before this second service entrance. And after feedback from the commission, and feedback from, from neighbors that live in the area, and understand, really, the everyday traffic patterns, we've agreed and, and extended that widening all the way up to, to Burkimo now. Here's the area Marissa had mentioned, increased number of plants in the northwest corner. There's a residential lot that's closer to grade, to our proposed grade in that area. So obviously, one of the more affected lots. So in working with that resident there, we were actually able to increase that, that side yard slightly, and as you can see, the previous plantings in that area, and now the proposed plantings in that area. So we've created a, a much better buffer in that area to the satisfaction of those folks. Blend the design wall in better. Before, we really had a placeholder. At this point, it was more of a block look, and here you can see the stone and stucco look that's much more complimentary to the building and the surrounding area. We'll obviously get into the elevations here and materials shortly. Bring the height down as much as possible. We did relook at that within our building, and we were able to find a foot in each floor of ceiling height that we reduced, so an additional three feet came down. So what I'm showing you here is what, what Marissa had pointed out, the north side elevation that is along the neighbors, on their view. And you'll see that they only ever see a two-story building and some portion of one-story building, and we've confirmed that that whole area is actually under the twenty-five-foot height, which was a, a significant feat for us to be able to, to accomplish that, and we're happy with that. And I think we've satisfied a number of folks, at least in terms of height with that.
So in your, in your pictures, which is the wall that you wanted to eliminate? It says you want to waive the requirement for the eight-foot masonry wall. Is that that one, or is that another view?
No, the, the, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but that wall would have gone along this edge here, is that correct? I believe. What we're doing on this site overall is we're exporting a tremendous amount of material. We're actually digging down far to sink the building into the ground as much as possible, and then we're stepping the building up, as you see, and we'll walk through these floor plans momentarily.
Right, but my question is, why do you want to eliminate the wall there? Isn't that where the backs of the homes?
Because right now, it's kind of hard to see on this plan, but there we go. These are actually retaining walls. We're dropping, each of these retaining walls is six feet high, and I think we're tiering two to three each. So we're already dropping eighteen-plus feet in that area. So if you put a, a wall in where we're dropping down, it's, you won't see the wall, essentially. Really, we're building the wall, it's a retaining wall, but it's not, it won't act as a screen wall. Is that? Yeah, and I can walk through, I'm glad you brought that up.
Because I've seen...
At the end, I have cross-sections from the neighbors, and you can better see...
Yeah, I've seen pictures of, of what the neighbors are going to see. So even though you're dropping it down, you're, they're still going to see two floors of the building.
If they look down, they see two, two floors. What, what they really see is over the top of the building, looking over the building.
So you're saying that from the, the people that live over there, they don't see any of the building, because it's dropped down so much? No, that's not, Marissa?
I'm sorry, that's, that's not what I was trying to say.
Okay.
No. Yes, you can see the building, but because the building has sunk down so much, it's not at the same elevation of them. They don't stand on their backyard, and it's not right in front of them, it's down below them, so they're looking down.
Well, my question was, how much of the building do they see, regardless of whether they're looking down or up? How much of the building is visible to them?
I believe that's shown in the cross-sections, and I'll show that here.
Sure, jump in there.
Yeah, could I just follow up? I was over there yesterday, and spent some time over there, and I'm not suggesting this, but I have a question. If you were to lower the building, chop ten feet off the top of the building, what would those people see up on the hill, top of the hill? Wouldn't they still see the building?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was the impression I had, that they're up high looking down, and so no matter how high the building is, they're going to see the building and the top of the building.
True, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, inherently, if something's higher, if something's lower, you're always going to see what's, what's down below. I'm just going to have our architect briefly run down some of the adjustments we made based on our feedback from the last meeting.
Mayor and council members, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Drew Roskos. My architecture firm's name is H E D. As Chris mentioned, this is a list of items that we've changed since our meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission. We've reduced, reduced the overall building height by three feet. We revised the material palette. I have a material board here with me today, I can get into that more detail, but the overall story is that we've used more earth tones and browns and basements.
Okay, one second. You reduced it by three feet below the forty that you're asking? Or what?
No.
So what's, if you reduce it by three, just tell us what the height of the building is, at its highest.
It, it's under forty. It's, it's hard to say, because of the, the measurement is from existing grade, so it varies as you go around the building.
Its highest point is forty.
That's, that's what I want to know. Okay, its highest point is forty, even, even with the three-foot reduction? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because the three-foot reduction comes in other areas. It's not, it wasn't globally across everything.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
We revised the window. We added window trim, a stucco window trim, which is common of this area, to add shadow lines and depth to the elevations. We revised the roof terrace canopy. That was one of those pinch points where we were coming over that forty feet, so we reduced, we pushed the roof canopy back, so that it was not in conflict with the forty-foot max building height. All the rooftop equipment will be screened. It'll be screened with metal panel, and it is a, one rooftop equipment, so it's not a farm of condensing units, it's one unit that is screened by one enclosure. We have added trees in the service area, that was one of the requests, and to sort of curate as, along the window openings and the, and blank wall areas near the service, to kind of curate the, the landscape along the building. This is our first floor plan. On the southeast corner, that's the main entry for the building, and that's the A Assistant Living and Independent Living entry, and also for memory care. The amenities are in yellow, and the backup house areas are in gray, so this is our service area, and that's mirroring the, sort of the service corridor. On the other side is the McDonald's and the Circle K. We definitely wanted our service to be on this southern portion, so as not to disturb the residents on this side. The orange are the independent living dwelling units, and we have two courtyards on this level, this one here, and then this portion of courtyard is a stepped courtyard, so this is the lower half of that stepped courtyard. This is our second floor plan. This is the secondary empty entry point, so this is at grade, and then as the slope, as the site slopes down, this, you know, then shows as the second floor. The, as Marissa mentioned, the blue is the memory care, so they, they have their units here. their units here. The green shows the assisted living, and then yellow is the amenities space, their dining areas, and the upper tier of the courtyard on the side. And then the third floor, reduce, so we're reducing or stepping the building back to mirror the existing grade, and these are the independent living units with some amenities up here as well, and this is where the portion where we want to have that roof terrace, and we pushed back that canopy, so that would be within conformance. This is the current rendering of the project. So this is, as I mentioned, the southeast corner of the site, and we're going to try to push for a design that's welcoming to residents and attractive to potential residents. The, it's much more hospitality-like, and some of the materials, we're using stone at the entry points, a metal panel to kind of unify and wrap this long wall. This is our accent color stucco, and this wall, we've sort of punctured in to the wall, kind of carving away at the wall to create these interesting balconies and viewpoints out to the mountains. And then this is a rendering of the northwest corner. This is more typical of what the neighboring, the neighbors will see. So it's much more of this small-scale push and pull of units where we've revised the balconies, and they're much more carved out of the wall, creating more visually interesting shadow lines around the area.
Is this around the whole building?
This rendering? This is?
Because it looks like on our picture that it's just a big flat wall on, I can't see.
The south side.
The south side. Trevino.
Trevino. I can go back to a floor plan. So that, that flat wall is this wall here?
So it is a flat wall. There's no recessed areas like you just showed on the other picture?
There are recessed areas, but by law, the footprint is continuous and flat, but the, we carve away at the building to create recessed balconies, and they are shown by these little white dots.
Yeah, that doesn't, I don't get the dots. Do you have a picture of what it looks like on that side?
I don't have one with me.
Because it's not, it's not actual recessed?
It's set five foot back. So the white wall is here, and then there is a five-foot balcony.
Along the entire Trevino side?
Where you see all those dark spots.
Along the entire Trevino side?
Along this wall. So to, sorry, I'm not answering your questions.
Yeah, I'm getting.
So it is, it is along this wall, but we don't puncture in the five-foot balconies on this wall. And that's single-story in the blue.
Right, vice mayor?
Thank you. Drew?
Yes.
What we, what we have for renderings on the presentation, that's, that's on, what we get to look at, looks like a 1930 industrial building out of Chicago. And I'm telling you, if, if what you're showing us, if what you're showing us is different than what we've, what we've got, and I want to try to make this deal work, believe me. I think, I think we've got a good project, but what we're looking at, what I'm, what I'm looking at on my screen, seriously, looks like an institutional prison. And, and it, I don't think, from what I'm seeing, your presentation here, and what I am seeing here, what the public is seeing, are the same presentations. And so, you know, I, I need, I need to see what we're actually going to be looking at and what we're actually building, because what we're looking at here doesn't make it. Does that make sense?
It does, and I think that some of the changes that we were making were in response to the comments from Planning and Zoning Commission and from the neighbors.
Okay, then, and I, the only comment, I've had several comments about this project, but the majority of the comments that I've received are because of the elevations not being pretty. And what I'm seeing here is not what I'm seeing here. So I think that we need to spend some time and relive your elevations and actually show us what we're going to be looking at. And I know that's, that's a lot of work, but if, if the only comments I'm receiving are the drive aisle, the entry aisle on the northwest corner is, is not where we want it, but all the rest of my comments are on these elevations, and what I'm seeing here and there, two totally different buildings.
Well, I'd be happy to show you what that looks like, because this is, this is the design that we were going to move forward with, and so we can show you those views.
Well, I, I can't see it either, to tell you the truth. I, I mean, I would have to see what all, all sides of the building look like. I can't imagine this, because first of all, it's really only showing the entrance. I can't see the side of the building, and I can't see what the people who live around it are going to be seeing.
For instance, your entry that's got, thank you, mayor, your entry that is covered with a, almost a flying arc, a flying diamond, if I may. I can't see if it's actually vault or if it's pitched or flat, but I can't find that anywhere on what we're looking at.
No, I can't either.
And that's, and I, I mean, what I'm trying to see, sure.
Madam mayor, while she's coming there, just out of a question, and I'm not that familiar with your company, but I'm very familiar with this concept and the demand for the use, so I'm on board. But the diversity of product types, originally when this was Hemingway, they did the cluster home, you know, the single 10-bedroom, 12-bedroom homes. What I really liked about that in particular was because it was another type of senior housing that we didn't have. So you're going to a more traditional, which I'm okay with, but I'm back to, why did you, why did you switch that? Was it cost? Because I, I mean, I've done cost analysis on these types of homes, and they, they run about a million dollars a home, but it's a 10-bedroom home, 12-bedroom. So I'm just wondering, is that just because your area of expertise is in this more traditional style? Could you talk to that point?
Exactly. That's mainly it. You know, we really try and build a continuum of care-type product, and that other product is more of a single stage of living, whether it's just assisted living or just independent. You know, we find our residents really prefer and like the advantage of being able to age in place, so that's, that's why.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just, just again, talking about the design, this is the entrance to our town also. I mean, we take that into consideration. You're not, you know, way far into town, away from other, it's not only the neighbors that are going to see this, but this is the entrance to our town, and I agree with the vice mayor 100% that it looks like a hospital or something like that. It's, it's just a flat, I hate to say it, ugly building, but that's what it is. And I, I mean, I don't like the design at all. And if you've changed it to make it look nicer, I'd be willing to look at it, but I, I can't picture this as is. I've been on that property many, many times, and it's, this building is taking up the entire property, so this is going to be very, very large. There is nothing there but building and parking lot all around. I can't really picture this the way it is. Marissa, did you want to clarify something?
I just wanted to clarify. What you're looking at is my presentation. I didn't receive the applicant's presentation in time to give that to you. So that's what, what you're looking at are the elevations, as opposed to this being the rendering, which is a little more three-dimensional, and that is hard to transcribe from what you're looking at.
Right.
Yeah.
I clearly understand.
Just to clarify.
I clearly understand it. Thank you, Marissa. But it's, it's very, very difficult for me to look at the industrial building that I'm looking at compared to what your renderings are. So maybe we move along and stay away from the architecture of it and talk about something else, and request you to bring back to Marissa what we're actually going to be looking at. Because if you ask me to vote on this today, I would have to say no, simply because of the architecture. But what I'm seeing there is a different building than what I'm seeing here.
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine?
You know, this back and forth has got me wondering. Do you see what we're looking at?
Yeah, I'm familiar with what you're looking at now. You're looking at the two-dimensional building elevations.
You have the five views, but they're all single elevation. Sorry.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mayor, if I may, when you, when you talk about dimensions, looking at this particular elevation here, that really is one dimension with recessed patios, correct?
That's it.
So it's, you don't have the push and pull on that side?
Correct.
Okay. And I would have to concur with the comments that have been made. I certainly appreciate the fact that you all have worked very closely with P&amp;Z and remediated their eight recommendations. I mean, that's, that's commendable as a developer. We don't see that all the time, so thank you for that. In, in some of your other renderings, with the push and pull design, it had, had more of a southwest feeling to it, frankly. And I have a real issue, although architecturally, you made it more creative by recessing the patios, externally, the walls still are straight and flat and have that, I think you said hospitality. It has more of, and even that entryway, it looks more like a hotel rather than a residential building. No, no offense to the architects. So frankly, in addition to seeing additional pictures, I would like to see a little more push and pull on, on that face there. So if you're going to be going back to the drawing board, those are my comments. Thank you.
Marissa, can I say a question too? When we had a discussion, you said at one point, it, it's only 40 feet, but it looks 53 from certain angles. Could you explain that?
Do you have a picture of the elevation from Trevino looking?
No.
Okay.
Because I think how it looks is really important to the, to the neighbors and to the, to the entrance there.
Mayor, just to clarify, looks 53 from where?
I don't, I'm not sure. I just wrote it in my notes that Marissa said it, and in one way, it looks 53, even though it's not.
Okay, so we see this with houses that are terraced here in town. When you're looking at it from the side, it's terraced down, but if this were on like an Arroyo, and you were looking across the canyon, you're just going to see the one plane like we do with a house here in town. So it is only approximately, you know, some areas it varies, but 25 feet from existing grade, which would be allowed with the base zoning right now. But when, I just wanted to point this out, when you're looking at it from Trevino or from this angle along Seguero, it is going to appear a lot taller, and it's going to appear approximately 55 feet, or I'm sorry, 53 feet in height.
53, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Did I explain my, okay. I just wanted to know if I explained myself right.
What?
Okay.
What, what is, what is the grade below street level? In other words, whether it's existing grade or, or whatever. In other words, you have your street level here. I've been out in that lot. Isn't it dropped down significantly from the street in certain areas?
You're talking about the proposed grading of the site, how, in relation to?
Well, first of all, today, in some areas, it seems to be below street level. Okay, now with respect to grade, what, what, what are you doing in terms of grading? How far are you taking it down? You had mentioned that earlier.
Eric, do you want to take a step down?
I mean, you are taking it down from natural grade, correct?
We are. So there's 35 feet of drop from the northwest corner of the property down to the southeast corner. And so our proposal is, you know, we have, I think, three rows of three, or I'm sorry, three rows of six-foot retaining walls along Burquemo. So as you're driving along Burquemo, you're not going to see the wall. You're going to see, the parking lot's down below.
True.
So you're not going to see that. Whereas on the opposite side, on Seguero, we have a few three-foot retaining walls. So as you're driving along Seguero, you're going to see the walls. So that, does that help visualize? So we're pushing down the grade on Burquemo.
So when we talk about how much we're, where we're cutting, you know, this is the low portion of the site. There won't be as much cut out of this side, but as you go farther up the slope, more and more gets cut out. So essentially, you're shoehorning out the earth and putting the building in where the majority of the?
I understand that. That, so in terms of the height from the street level, it's going to be viewed significantly lower than it would if you weren't carving out and excavating the way you've proposed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say, mayor, just to be fair to these gentlemen in their presentation, it sounds to me like there's more information needed, and there's more architectural renderings needed. And I would move, we table this, this evening, and give them an opportunity to prepare for another round with us at a future date.
That, no, we can't do that unless we declare it a public record first. Yeah, we can't have the speaker cards. Yeah, well, I mean, I would agree with that. I don't know how the rest of council feels. I wouldn't want to have to vote on it right now. And I, I really like you to look at the height also. It's, you know, it's the entrance to our town, and if something is even 40 feet, it's really high for the entrance. We got a lot of traffic on Trevino. I know at one time, the neighbors on Trevino actually wanted part of that street closed because there was so much traffic. We got a lot of parking on that street. We haven't even talked about how much delivery you're going to have on that street. And I know that the fast food restaurants in there all have people parked along that street every single day, and they're still going to park there, and that's where you have to go down to make your deliveries. So I think, I think basically, you know, we're.
I'll make a motion. We table this.
Yeah.
And I'd second that, yeah.
So I think we're, we're basically saying, can you go back with our suggestions? And I think Marissa had made quite a few of these suggestions to you, also knowing how we probably would feel about the look of the building. And if you could also see what you can do about the height of the building, listen to some of the, you know, the issues that, you know, the neighbors have also. I have a motion and a second. Is there going to be any further discussion?
Have a discussion on a table motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Have a discussion on a table, a motion table.
Mitesh, can we have a discussion on?
No.
No, so we just have a motion and a second and a vote? Can we do just all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
No, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no, any opposed? Mayor six zero.
Thank you for your time and your input.
All right. Sorry for anyone who came that wanted to speak. We would have had to actually declare it a public record, and then I would have had to open the public hearing, but because we never got that far, I can't open it to the public to say anything. So we appreciate that you, you came.
Really, doesn't it? Can we, is it possible for us, we've been here three hours or so, and I need to speak, and I appreciate how hard you all work, and is it really we can submit by affidavit, petition, other documentation, other than asking some people to come back again and wait? Because I'm sure your meetings are always very busy and very, very long.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Mitesh, or?
What, what are the ways are the?
So, if I may, we always accept emails, letters into the public record on any of these types of matters. So if you have anything, like an email that you wish to send to the council?
If those would not become public, they would become known to you, but they would not become known to the public.
No, actually, we put those in the packets.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, so it's, it's part of the record, and so, yeah, so you, you know, if you want to do a old-school style letter, that will get into the record. If you want to do.
I'm old-school, you pick me off.
No, no, I'm just saying, no. Or, or, or emails, because actually, most people do emails nowadays, so. I didn't, I was not trying to pick you out. I apologize.
You're good in bright red, Grady, look at you.
But that would give. But that would give all of you a chance to express your concerns to council and council will not only get those, but they'll be part of the packet and other citizens will get a chance to see that as well.
There are more than just the six houses that back up in this town. I live 20 feet across the street and nobody's approached. Without Susan and David telling us about, we wouldn't even know. This is heartbreak. That's a monstrosity. It doesn't belong to anybody. There's a lot of.
Okay, this is, this is, okay, this already, it, hang on a second. Hang on a second, hang on a second. I can't open a public hearing because we just, we just tabled it.
Can we just talk like?
No, we can't. No, not at a meeting. We can talk to you after. We can talk to you after. Anybody who wants to come to my office to talk about it, I'd be very happy to have you come to my office, okay? But we, I can't do it here by law. Let me go to, let me go to our attorney, okay? Because he's giving me looks.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The matter's been tabled and we're not open for a public hearing on this topic anymore.
We got to hear him, though. He will vote.
I think you heard from us, okay? I think you heard our concerns. And we have done, we didn't accept this as is. We tabled it. We know what the issues are. We.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The matter will be agendized again in the future once these gentlemen revise their plans as they will and resubmit. So the public will have an opportunity to comment at that point in time.
Okay.
I'd like to make a suggestion to council. The next time they put a zoning sign, notice, public notice, which I was assumed was to conform to your rules, they should put it up not just on Saguaro where there was the right turn lane and the bike lane, no traffic could pull over and see it. I hiked up it literally. I killed his eye to read it, okay? It was.
Okay, why don't you, okay. Listen, I'm already in trouble for letting people talk, okay? I'm not allowed to do this. Send us your suggestions by email, call me, come to visit me in my office. I would be very happy to sit down with you. Any council person up here would be happy to sit down and discuss this with you, okay? We're not closing any doors. We're just saying we can't do it right here, but.
And the thought of you, I think you all did a great job.
There will be, there will be another meeting. You can come if you want. You won't have to if you want to give us all of your comments, okay? I don't think we did anything here to show you that we're not on your side also, that we want something for the best of this town. I don't think there's anyone up here that showed that, okay? We just by law can't do anything further at this point, so.
I know, it's very.
So come see me, contact any council person, send us all your emails, all your comments. It'll be public record, we'll read everything. We listen to everything you say. I mean, when have we not, everyone up here is very responsive.
Is the email online? The address?
Yes, everything is on our website. Everything's on our website. And I'm, my office is upstairs, okay?
Our attorney's nervous, look at him. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'm stopping. I'm stopping.
You see him?
All right. Now, where am I? All right. Okay, you ready now? We're going to wireless, is anyone here for the wireless hour? There will be one staff report for items 10 through 13. Call on Marissa.
Good evening.
Consideration of resolution 2018-03, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the town clerk and entitled "Small Wireless Facilities." Marissa.
Maritsa. Good evening, Mayor and Council, again. I'm going to just preface this by saying, this is a very complex issue and our town attorney has a better grasp on this than I do. I'm going to try and give some basics. I'm going to hope that Mitesh will interrupt me at any point. I won't be offended at all to help clarify. So this is, it's an act that was passed by the Arizona State last summer, and it is regarding small wireless facilities and the public right of ways. So again, like I said, last August, it was presented as House Bill 2365, and it requires small wireless facilities to be placed in town right of ways by right. These facilities would be fifth generation, which is also known as 5G, and they would be installed to upgrade the current 4G that we use now to 5G to help with broadband capacity. However, they would need to be located at a greater frequency than what current cellular small or wireless facilities are located at now. And examples that I provided here are Cox, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon that would be installing these types of facilities. Right now, the town code addresses installation of these types of facilities on town-owned and private properties, but we are, and they are required to have zoning review and approval, but we are looking at these being installed in the town right of way, and that's what this is addressing. So a small wireless facility is an antenna located inside an enclosure of not more than six cubic feet in volume. This is by definition as presented in the act that has been adopted. They are also allowed to have wireless equipment no greater than 28 cubic square feet or 50 cubic square feet if the equipment is ground mounted before the effective date. So if there's something already there, they could use that. And then we can also look at ancillary equipment, electric meters, concealment, element, grounding equipment, vertical cable runs and so forth. What we can regulate is the installation of these for public safety. Lines of sight comes to mind. The objective design standards and self-concealment. We do have design standards that are presented with this item, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a second. Reasonable spacing requirements, and the provider must pay for the cost of relocation of a utility pole or so forth to accommodate a public project. We cannot prohibit these to be located in the right of way. We cannot require that they be located on a specific pole. We cannot, again, sorry for the typo, we cannot prohibit their co-location into one location between the different facilities. And we cannot charge discriminatory fees or fees greater than those that are now law in ARS 9-5991. I'm going to ask for Mitesh to help clarify this specific point. There are four different types of facilities that we are looking at. We're looking at monopoles, we're looking at.
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, there are effectively four different types of installations for small wireless facilities. Those that can be mounted on existing traffic lights, those that could be mounted on existing streetlights, those that could be mounted on monopoles, and those that could be mounted on new utility poles, meaning poles that don't have light hanging off of them, don't have traffic signals hanging off of them. Effectively, a pole with only a wireless antenna at the top.
Thank you. So I put a lot of pictures in here. Again, Mitesh can help fill in the holes that I'm sure I'm going to present, but I wanted to give an idea of what these things actually look like. So this is kind of a typical monopole, where you have a tall pole and then the wireless facility is located at the top. And the regulation says that they can be no more than 40 inches in diameter at the ground level. And then here we have examples of what it would look like on a streetlight. They're completely contained inside of the pole. The facility is located on top. Right here, and here.
Marissa, one moment, please. Mayor, members of the council, and this is important, in our, the design guidelines that staff is proposing, we are recommending that they use the single canister antenna rather than an antenna that may be made up of three or four panels all mounted and sprouting off the side.
Which would be similar to this, correct?
Correct.
Madam Mayor, and that would conform to the mandate, to the law?
Correct, yes.
By having that. So it's not about how big, well, to a point, but it's, you have to have them or you have to allow them, I apologize.
Correct. So we have to allow them and therefore, in the recommendations that we have in our design guidelines, we're saying we give, we have a preference as the town to a canister antenna mounted on the utility pole rather than, you know, four different arrays flowering off.
And we do have one of these located here in town. It is at the corner of Palisades and Shea, and it is at our traffic signal that also has a straight light on it. And that's it right there, the canister.
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine.
We can't, we can suggest, but we can't make them put them on traffic lights, can we?
Correct, we cannot tell them where to locate.
Okay, thanks.
One of the things that we did want to make known is that we can regulate their height to an extent, and how we measure the height, here we have an example that depending on what the street pole looks like, correct me if I'm wrong, they can go 10 feet above the existing height or 40.
Yeah, it caps off at 40 feet in height or 10 feet above the existing height as long as there is no other utility pole taller within a 200 linear feet radius around that utility pole.
You see why I'm appreciative that he's here to help. So it's hard to see on the screen over here, but, you know, measuring the height of the pole is basically the vertical part of the pole, and once it starts going non-vertical, that's no longer considered part of the height of the pole. This is just a different diagram showing where the height of the pole is. It is not to the top of the light, it is the pole itself. And again, same thing that we have over there. Monopoles, we are recommending that they have stealth design.
Correct. Mayor, members of the council, monopoles and that third category that I mentioned, the utility pole with an antenna off the top, the design guidelines recommend that they, both categories, effectively be concealed as a decorative device.
So I show pictures here of what we are recommending and requesting, which is a stealth Saguaro. But I also wanted to let you know from these pictures, there's a difference between these right angled ones and these ones that actually look kind of like a Saguaro. So while we're requesting a Saguaro, doesn't necessarily look like a real Saguaro. So these are things that were, they're rather subjective and we can review those when they come in with an application. We do have two of these here in town. That is at Eagle Mountain and Shea. And as you can see, these two are the stealth, and then we did have a requirement that they put in a real Saguaro. Most people probably wouldn't even notice that they were there as stealth. Just wanted to give an example of what those may look like. And then because we can request a stealth Saguaro, we cannot mandate or require that, I just wanted to provide you with some other examples of what stealth designs look like in other locations in the United States. So we may potentially come up with one of these on our desks.
Which, the Lego one?
That's a chicken wing plate.
Isn't it likely that they're going to select, since they're going to be putting in up to, what, 200 of these things? Isn't it likely that they're going to pick the ones that are the least expensive? I know you, that's rhetorical, you can't answer that, but, never mind. I don't like this whole deal.
Do you have any input on that, Mitesh?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, that's one of the reasons why we're promoting a standard set of design guidelines that itemize in the stealth area what we are looking to see and what we would prefer to see. They can propose, you know, whatever design that they want, but they still have to go through planning and design approval. And so we've made it evident in the design guidelines that we are prefer, give preference to, you know, the Larson type of cactus surround that we've already seen installed in the town, and that we would like to have similar colors, dimensions, and usage that we have already approved in the past.
One thing I would like to point out, in case these come in and you're not surprised, these can go up to 40 feet in height.
So and if, if company comes in and they want to put it someplace where we deem it's not safe, because I think at one time there was a stealth Saguaro that was on a small median. I don't remember what street it was on, but somebody hit it. Can we say no to that?
No to hitting it?
No. That too.
Mayor, members of the council, our design guidelines indicate that we want 100% setback and fall requirement from any property line, sidewalk, or right of way, or roadway. Therefore, if it were to fall, you know, and if gravity does its job and it doesn't make it eject, it's going to fall and not land on something.
Okay.
One of the benefits to that is that it helps limit the height as well. If they go through the process and they request something taller than those 40 feet or, you know, taller than what's allowed, which is the 40 feet, if the fall zone doesn't meet that requirement that it has to equal the height, that would essentially eliminate a location out of safety.
Go ahead, Councilman Yates.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Although you mentioned that you can go up to 40 feet, the main purpose of this is to be kind of the submarket. Is that correct? Because the 40 footers, that's for like the main coverage, is it not?
That's, again, Mitesh.
The likelihood of a 40 footer, I mean, although it's in there, but we already have provisions for that.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, when they exceed 40 foot, they fall under our zoning requirements. So you, you know, a standard utility pole can be anywhere from in the high twenties up to in the mid thirties. So it's not to say that they won't request, you know, a 39 foot or, you know, just under a 40 foot utility pole. That's when, you know, that's really going to be governed by what they see as the effective area that they're trying to cover, because wireless communications is still kind of line of sight, and considering the town's topography, they may try to maximize that 40 foot level without going into zoning review.
I got it, thank you.
We can also regulate screening of the ground equipment. This is something that we would review if it came through planning and zoning. One thing I want to interject is that what we're proposing here is, these will all go through the encroachment permit process, and that will streamline the review process. There will be triggers for it to go through planning and zoning review. Not all of these proposed small wireless facilities will trigger that. If they do get triggered, then these are things that we can look at. Screening of ground equipment with landscaping and walls, colors, finishes, and so forth. But if they meet the base requirements that don't require planning and zoning review, they can just go in.
Marissa, sorry, I'm going to disagree a little bit. Mayor, members of the council, as part of our encroachment process, you know, we will have them sign a license agreement, and then for each location that they're wishing to install is a individual permit, that encroachment permit that gets appended to that license agreement. When they're going through that process, we are still requiring them to submit a site plan, show us where the location of the equipment associated with that's going to be, and then also work with the town, because the town may say, well, you're too close to the sidewalk, or we need you to orient the screening wall in a little bit of a different direction so that the passerby's don't see all the equipment behind the wall. So there is a modicum amount of analysis that goes into it and feedback that is provided to the utility or the wireless provider. So it's not a 100%, this is where I'm putting my equipment and you have to deal with it.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may? So in response to, I'm trying to look for some good news in all of this, and it's really hard to find any. So fall zone helps us, right? In terms of if someone's interested in putting one of these structures in the right of way, which are typically 10 feet, and they want to put a, well, they couldn't put 11 foot probably in the 10 foot, because it's going to end up in the street, correct?
Correct.
So the fall zone is about the only thing I can find helpful about this. You know, this law to me is a lemon, and you all have done a tremendous job, and I applaud you for, well, taking these lemons and making lemonade. This, clearly, we looked at this when it went through the legislature. This is something the league was opposed to. It's an overreach of our authority, but once again, our hands are tied. It's the law, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have right now. I would like to say that Mitesh has been a really big help on this. The technical terms, the processes that, as you probably noticed, are a little bit confusing, and I've been looking at this for several months. I can assure you that when staff gets their first application in, it's going to be, I'm going to need a lot of handholding again. I do know that there is, Cox has already approached me via email and wanting to know what our regulations are and what is the process for getting it. I let them know that we have this meeting tonight and I expect to hear from them.
And tell them we want better service.
That's that Motorola training, right?
All right, so if I could get a motion from someone just to declare this as a public record? record, we can move on.
So moved, second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing, Clayton's the only one left.
Speaker, cut.
Public hearing to receive comments on ordinance eighteen dash oh one, amending town code, chapter sixteen, streets and sidewalks to include article sixteen dash two, containing provisions related to small wireless facilities and the use of public rights of way and declaring, and emergency. Anything? Nothing? Okay. Close the public hearing, consideration of ordinance eighteen dash oh one as just presented. Any further council discussion? No? Then I need a motion?
Move to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash oh three.
Second? I was awake.
Mayor, it's ordinance, he should make the motion on.
Uh huh.
It's the ordinance first?
Ordinance number twelve.
He said resolution, though, he's doing the declare the public record.
Okay, number twelve?
Eighteen oh four.
Mm-hmm, it's number twelve.
Eighteen oh one, isn't it?
Eighteen oh one, it says here.
It's eighteen oh one?
Yes.
So, I move to approve ordinance eighteen oh one.
Helen seconded it? No, we didn't. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And a protest.
Mayor, six zero.
Keep it to yourself if you want to go home tonight. Consideration of resolution two zero one eight dash one eight, adopting the wireless facility license agreement and the wireless facility standard terms and conditions for locating wireless facilities within town rights of way, the two thousand eighteen Town of Fountain Hills wireless facilities and the right-of-way design standards and guidelines, and amending the town comprehensive fee schedule and declaring and emergency. Any other discussion? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, six zero.
Okay, discussion was possible, direction to staff related to anything in the legislative bulletin, maybe I've got something specific? You do, okay. Councilman Magazine?
Staff know anything recent about twenty-three thirty-three, which is the ability of anybody?
The what?
Twenty-three thirty-three, which gives people the ability to have an office with, any kind of an office in their home without any regulations, without...
Are you talking about the, the, the home business one?
Home business.
Yeah, is that the Senate one, or the?
House.
The House one?
Twenty-three thirty-three is the House.
Yeah, I think that, that's gotten to the point where they were having some discussion. I know I was just opposed to it, the League was trying to negotiate with Representative Wenninger, is it?
I don't know the details.
Yeah, I think the one in, well, yeah, I, and we, we were already opposing it
Right.
in the League. Anything else?
No, no other update or anything?
It, it appears that it's probably still a committee, I don't believe it's dying.
Yeah, I think the one in the Senate got pulled, though, because there was a companion bill in the Senate, that was David Farnsworth's, I think that got pulled.
It was who?
I think so, in the Senate.
I hope so.
But this is still in the House.
If it passes, you're gonna see signs all over town in front of homes.
Yeah, we know.
Awful, just awful.
Yeah, it is. Okay, we're, we're fighting this one. Any other one? No, okay, don't go away, we're not finished, let's see. I had all my notes out. Any direction to the town manager?
The water.
What?
I have a comment, and, and I'd ask the town manager...
Direction?
To look into the town logo for both entrances of our town.
Monument signs.
The monument signs, and you know, those little things mean a lot, and I think it, it's a real impression on our town, so they've been stolen, and hopefully, we can get them replaced quickly.
Justin, did you have an update on that?
Did you catch a guy?
Madam Mayor, members of the councils, yes, Grady, we have placed the order for them, and we are changing what they are made out of to just a basic sign blank, since this will be addressed as part of the wayfinding and monument signs, but we are going to be replacing them very shortly, the order should arrive by the end of next week.
Thank you.
Mayor, related to that, Justin, is the solar light still functioning on the entryway?
Madam Mayor, council member, I'm not sure, I've not been down there in the dark in a while, I can certainly have a look.
They were back in December, I haven't driven by there at night in a while.
You guys did a great job getting one that worked, and they were working really well, and I, I think I had noticed that it was, it was not lit last time I came through, but it might have been early in the evening.
I'll take a look.
And just, just check, yeah.
We'll definitely do that.
Any, any other direction? Okay, last is activities or meetings, I asked Cecil to report on the tribal inauguration.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we wanted to congratulate three new members of the Yavapai Nation, Vice President Paul Russell, Councilmember Ruben Valderas, and Secretary Verlininos, they're joining President Bernadine Burdette, Treasurer Pamela Mont, and Councilmember Gerald Doka. I'll tell ya, I'm, I'm real excited, and I know we're all tired, but the, working together with, with the tribe over the last year, since we did that initial joint meeting, has been tremendous, and, and they invited a whole bunch of folks from Fountain Hills, and we had a good showing, Paul Perot was there from the Chamber, Senator John Kavanaugh, yourself, was there, Debbie Ski, and my, it was, it was a good show, and every time we show up to these events and we're inviting them, it, I, I think we're on a good path with them.
Yeah, and, and I think it was great that they acknowledged every Fountain Hills person that was there by name, and they acknowledged all the people, and this, this was great, because it's, I think, I think we're doing really well. We're gonna be having a joint meeting soon with them also here, we had one at the fort, and we're looking forward to that one. Anything else? Did you have?
No, ma'am, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, just, we had a coalition meeting, you know what we do there, just updates on school various programs, Dropbox, we discussed new marijuana laws, results of school surveys, Senator Kavanaugh was there, he was a presenter, they had a lot of questions to him about the state law, we also had a two thousand seventeen year in review to look back at everything that we've accomplished and where we need to go from there. The only other meeting that I had was the League Executive Committee, and once again, we just discussed everything in the legislature, the various bills circulating and the impact on municipalities, and I continue to have the Monday call-ins with the League, because with the legislative bills, you really have to have almost like a daily update on what's going on, it's moving so fast. So, that's all I have, does anybody else have anything? Nope, if not, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sure no one is...